To address today, they came up at the briefing yesterday. One was to have a map that shows that the garage on Woodland's property is actually gone. And I received that from Soundview Engineers a little earlier today and forwarded that to staff.
We have not seen it.
That plan also shows a green area chart. Which shows that there is sixty five point four percent green space. This is in the R six zone, so all you need is thirty five percent green space. So it more than meets that.
Is it both lots, correct? You're giving us the green area for both lots?
No, that is just for one sixty three Field Point Road. It's sixteen thousand one hundred and seventy seven square feet after the lot line adjustment. And based on that figure, it's sixty five point four percent green space. The the other item we had was.
And and what about the green? You didn't provide the green area for Zero Woodland?
It's it's a vacant lot, so I didn't think that I would need to do that.
Just on our, on all, the only map that we've received, it still has the garage on it. So for us, it's not a vacant lot at this point because I have not received that new map you have. I don't think the commission received it at all. So we don't, we don't have that. So you're gonna just say it's a vacant lot then, once you, once we receive and that map is is with us.
Pat, would that be something you could put up on the screen that I, the map that I sent to Jackie earlier today?
It would be if I had it, Mr. Hegney. I don't have it.
Okay, we'll try to track it down for you, Mr. Hegney, but you go ahead. So you're saying a hundred percent green area then? And you continue. I apologize for the interruption.
The other issue, which we were asked to address was FAR. And this property had the, at one sixty three, has a structure on it, which is three stories, does not have a basement, does not have an attic. And the field card shows that it is three thousand two hundred and fifty three square feet. After the lot line adjustment, there is the opportunity to build eight thousand eight hundred and ninety nine square feet under the point five five FAR in the R six zone. The building is currently at a point two FAR. I had sent this information over earlier last week to staff. They had forwarded it to Jody for his comment. And we were fortunate that three oh seven this afternoon to receive an email from Jody that said, the information provided is sufficient.
Okay, well, this is the, you know, the problem with last minute information. We haven't seen that either. And, you know, it, the meeting is started at four and it, something went at three and we haven't seen, we, I have not received that either. A question for you, Mr. Hegney. Does that building have a CO for what it is, what's currently in it?
I did some research on it and there was a fair amount of back and forth with the building officials in nineteen sixty one on this. And they determined that it was a three family house. And it included plans for both kitchen on all three floors. So I, I believe that that it it is the
All right, so this is the map without the garage?
Yes.
Okay.
And showing the green area on the.
So I'm a little puzzled because whether in that, I did see an email that said it was. I did see an email that said that it was a, not a four family, but a three family, and that startled me just now. I just as we were all signing in. And I'm a little confused because that still doesn't say whether or not you have a CO for the building.
That's something that we would have to deal with, with the building department. So I know when my client purchased the property, that would have been something that came up. I didn't represent the client on the purchase, so I'll have to get the municipal search that they had done at that time.
So I, what I'm struggling with, and Patrick Tracy helped me out with this. Without a CO, we don't know that the tax card is correct because it goes, nobody's been inside it then to inspect it and see it. So without the CO, we don't, I mean, yes, you're obviously not. The simple answer is we don't have an FAR problem, but we don't actually know what the FAR is because you've not had a full inspection and it's unclear. The last time I saw something, it was a two family unit. So Patrick Tracy, can you help me out with this? Because how do we know that this tax card's correct if there's no CO in the building?
Well, the tax card does not have to be correct. They do their inspection, their quality review is different than what we, we do. So it would be the certificate of occupancy that we'd want to be correct. If there are units in there that are not CO'd or there's some internal circulate internal reconfiguration of the space, we'd want to make sure that it's back to whatever the last known occupancy is. So and that would be handled with zoning and building. So I don't think it particularly affects the activity that's going on or being requested tonight. But we certainly make it a thing that gets done for the next phase.
All right, so you're saying that if we don't know whether or not those units are safe and habitable, we could still approve the lot line revision?
Under this type of application, if this was a zoning application, I would say we should have the zoning correct first. This is, again, we're, we're, we're figuring lots here and we're not making any determination as to the future development of the property. But again, if they want to clear it up, we certainly would encourage it and ask for it with any permits that need to be requested. And just for everybody who who doesn't know, we do look at development plans after decisions of the commission. So if the, that's typical. So if the commission wants to, again, ask that, that is standard and we can look at the developments as they come in before they get zoning permit to make sure that those items are addressed.
Okay, um, so you, do you have, I'm I'm trying to be helpful without being in complete in our application. The CEO has some sort of sign off where he's asking for the floor area. Do you have this confirmation from him that he's satisfied, Patrick?
I have the three unit discussion. I'm looking for something newer than that.
Okay, so Mr. Hegney, let's, let's ask something else. Did you do the sewer comment signature?
Again, the sewer would be one of those issues that would be resolved if any development is going to occur on the woodland lot. And of course, the decision letter that you generate on these types, types of applications say that we're not telling you, you can actually develop this lot. We're just saying that this isn't a subdivision or re-subdivision. And that's all I'm looking for.
Okay, so let me ask you the question differently. The sewer comments ask that prior to our our acting on this application, you provide the acknowledged receipt of their comments. Patrick, is there a way that this application could be added to the eight eight agenda?
We, yeah, we absolutely, Madam Chair, we can do that.
I'm just thinking, look, Mr. Hegney, what I'm thinking is this. We got a couple of loose ends. You don't want to lose August. I understand that, but you could wait a week to get everything in order. Right? So the sewer comments and I, Jody has apparently signed off on your FAR number. Would you be willing, here's my big question to you. One of the biggest concerns I always have when something doesn't have a CO is you've got a three unit building. Is it safe for the residents? Or are we, I know it's not part of this action, but it's before us and somebody stop me if I'm not on safe legal ground. I'm sure, Mr. Hegney, you could help me with that, but.
If I could interject then, Madam Chair. For multi-family buildings, the Fire Marshal's Office does do inspections of multi-family buildings to address the very question that you're asking. They, I don't think care what the zoning of any property is. They care about the use and that the use is safe. So.
They're safety grasp, and that's the same thing that I'm asking you. Okay, do we have that?
From the Fire Marshal's Office?
Yes.
I, 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 as, since I didn't think that it was an issue for a lot line revision, I, I didn't get into that.
Yeah, and I know I'm stretching the FAR question to get there, but the, I don't know. I feel like it's before us, Patrick or Tracy, stop me if I'm on weak legal ground, but this is before us and to approve some, something that has a use that's continuing and we don't know if it has safety grasp or not. And that it's safe for the residents. I'm, I am uncomfortable with that now.
So Madam Chair, there, there are three other departments that would get involved in that. One is the zoning enforcement. If there is a zoning violation, that is something that they would address. Well, your, your staff can certainly alert them to the fact that there is an application. And of course, the zoning enforcement officer just looked at the, the square footage and, and signed off on that. And I just forwarded that to Pat. The second part is the building department can post something. And I oftentimes get calls from people and they say the building department has just put a notice on my door, the unsafe for occupancy. Okay, we resolve that. And the third, of course, as I mentioned, is the Fire Marshal's Office.
But we don't know if any of that's happened.
But that's not, that's not really germane to whether we're moving the lot line over and adding thirteen hundred and sixty square feet from one lot to another.
I think what Mr. Hegney is suggesting is that the decision on this lot line change is not related to the enforcement action that would be pending or should be pending.
Okay, so we could do them separately. Okay.
Or might even occur.
All right, we can add you, if you would get this, Miss Sewer is asking you to sign the acknowledgement. I'd like to have, you know, we have, sending it after four is, we're trying to avoid people sending it that late. If you could, and we'll put you on the, I know you worked all day to get there and I apologize because I realized that, you know, you're looking at us being on break for the last half of August and that seems long. So if, if.
I don't object to that break.
Okay, that's good. If we could, if we could put him on the August for August eighth agenda, and I promise I won't be doing that the whole night. But on this one, you've got, you've got just a few things to tidy up and we could move you.
I, I, I will introduce you to my partner who usually you don't see until we actually file a lawsuit or take an appeal, Jack Slane. And I will ask him to sit in at my stead since I will be on the west coast of Vancouver Island during that meeting.
All right, okay. That's fine. It'll be a pleasure to meet whoever wants to sue us. All right, okay, so, so.
Not the point.
So let's, just in case, let's see if, does anybody on the commission wish to add any comment to this? And.
Madam Chair, I just have one question. I, I, I'm curious as to, not that it's necessarily germane, but I'm curious as to the the logic for doing this or the purpose for moving this lot line.
Ultimately, we will be coming in with an application for the woodland property. And currently it is less than the lot area required in the zone. And with this, it will meet the lot area in the zone.
Thank you.
And Madam Chair, to answer your question from yesterday, is the area that we're looking to add wide enough to be counted as part of lot area? That would be really unfortunate if I went through all this and it reduced one lot and didn't increase the other. So, yes, as long as it is greater than the sum of the side yards, which in this zone is fifteen feet.
Yeah, I couldn't figure out how wide that, yeah.
This is fifteen point nine feet wide.
Okay, I was trying to, it's very hard to scale on, and I couldn't figure it.
It, it actually does show on.
Oh, I couldn't find it.
On the form that, that it shows, it's in the hashed area. It's hard to see. Okay, but, yeah, that would be really unfortunate if I went through this whole process and ended up making both lots smaller.
All right.
The goal is to make one bigger.
Anything else from the commission? All right, anybody from the public wish to comment on this application? Is this Mr. Hamilton? I'm assuming, is this a neighbor, Mr. Hegney? Do you know?
I don't know.
All right, I'm gonna just allow him to talk. Mr. Hamilton? Mr. Hamilton?
Yes, can you hear me?
Hello, did you wish to speak on this application?
I'm, I wish to speak on the five brokerage application.
Okay, then I'm gonna just, you hang tight. We're gonna get there eventually. It'll take us a bit. We've got some other stuff to do first, but we'll get there and then I'll, I'll call on you again, okay?
Hey, thank you. Nice to see you again.
Thank you, sir. All right, okay, anybody else in the public wish to speak on one sixty three Field Point? All right, okay, so Mr. Hegney, we are gonna put you on the eight, eight agenda. I was a little concerned I might get mutiny from the commission. But, you know, kind of defeats the point of taking a three week break when you just meet like crazy right before it. But it seems like we could just quickly fix these things and move you on.
Well, I'll put a summary together so that staff has all that in one package to submit to you.
And I know that you're all arguing that it's not relevant, that the building might not be safe, but boy, if there was any way that you could give comfort on the use, on, on the use itself.
Yeah, I, Madam Chair, we did have a municipal search done when my client bought it. I, I will get that from the attorney who handled that.
Any kind of comfort that those people aren't, that whoever lives there is not at risk. All right.
Certainly.
Thank you very much, Mr. Hegney. Are you staying?
I am staying.
Yes, you are. Okay, now, now we're gonna switch gears and we're gonna go to the discussion items. And our first item is Nichols MD LLC for a pre-application review on a proposal to add a residential structure behind an existing office structure at thirty two Field Point Road and to create an HO at thirty two Field Point Road. Go ahead, Mr. Hegney.
Thank you, Madam Chair. If you could also bring in Rudy Ridberg, who should be hanging around in the attendees.
Mr. Ridberg, if you would kindly raise your hand.
Architect of record.
There he is.
So we, we came to you on July sixth. And we proposed a proceeding with this four unit residential development to the rear of the property under section six dash two oh five. That's how the building next door was added on to. And the question that comes up with this is, can you do that and have a detached structure? And that was one of the questions we were going over on July sixth. When we looked at it, I, I think it, it's an open question. And, and so we thought that, given the fact that we have a building from eighteen eighty nine that really creates an important streetscape along Field Point Road that proceeding under historic overlay made more sense. And so one of the things we wanted to confirm for you this evening is that we will file with the Historic District Commission for the historic overlay, the certificate of appropriateness so that we can return to you with that in the fall. The, the other question that came up was about the the size of the building. One of the things that made it look much bigger was that we had a stair tower and elevator run that went over to the, that went up to the roof and over the roof. And it made it look much larger than the building actually is. And that's one of the things that Rudy Ridberg's office went over and, and modified. We wanted to share that with you as well. And before we get to that, I did want to mention, Mr. Haskell, who's the owner of the building at twenty four Field Point Road, just immediately to the north, had reached out to us. He has concerns about parking. He's had issues with the property north of him in utilizing his parking. And we haven't had the opportunity to meet with him. He's also retained as councillor Jackie Kaufman. Jackie and I spoke today. We plan to get together later this month to go over Mr. Haskell's concerns and address them. We think that based on the use that we're proposing of the historic building that we can more than provide adequate parking onsite with the twenty two spaces that we have, plus a handicap. And we'll go over those numbers with Attorney Kaufman and, and Mr. Haskell so that they're, they're satisfied. And as I told Jackie earlier, that this is just a pre-app where we don't have all of that put together that we would normally have for you on a, on a final site plan subdivision application. But I want to assure them that, that we will continue to, to provide that information and work with them as we return with the request to rezone this HO. With that, if we could pull the presentation material up and Rudy can go over that just briefly with you. I wasn't gonna take up a lot of your time this evening. Because I'm hoping that the items toward the end of your agenda will not be too late. And we can can dispense with this rather quickly.
What, what about the end of our agenda relative to this?
Well, since I have the last two items other than your amendment to the regulations.
You want to go to Vancouver. I'm sorry. I missed that. Okay, all right. No, no problem.
I have to say, Mr. Ridberg has been very generous for tomorrow night's meeting to trade places with me because the ARC meeting may run later than this one. Hard to go to the airport at four o'clock in the morning when you haven't woken up yet. So if we could go to sheet three, please.
Also, you know, you can just zoom in from Vancouver if you really miss us next week and not send Mr. Slane.
I, if you see the place that I'm staying in, I'm not sure it's gonna have wifi.
Oh, just excuses, excuses. All right.
So we could go to slide three.
All right.
So what we had before was a, no, Rudy. Why, why don't you describe the architecture?
Yeah, and, and Mr. Ridberg, in case you didn't hear it, both Mr. McCray and Mr. Levy commented that they were having trouble following what the changes had been. So there's your lead off.
That's fine. That's what we're here for. Yeah, if you put, if you would put them side by side like we like to do on conference room walls and stuff, you can really pick it up. But essentially, what, what the comments were last time were the fact that the stair tower and the elevator tower, we were going up to the roof for both of them for rooftop access for all the amenity of the residential units. However, since we have to be on the, either the north side of the building or the south side of the building because we are fully parked and driving underneath the building. And we put it on the south side, not on Mr. Haskell's property, because you can see the amount of trees that are there. We did not want to encroach closer to his property than the building and the front does now. And we have an opening in the, in the tree wells on the south side. We located it there. But in the same vein, though, with your regulation that references elevator story overrun six one twenty seven. What we did was we brought down the, the stair and the elevator will now both stop at the third floor roof, not the roof of the, you know, not the higher portion of the roof. So essentially, you get out at that floor. You do not go up to the roof on either the stair or the elevator. We have a, if you look in the top left vignette there, you can see a small sloped roof in, in the middle of the building. We are going to access that roof only from a stair tower and stairwell in the inside of the building. So we shrunk the inside apartments to get enough room to get a stair tower to go up to the roof. Okay, meets all the regulations that you need and it allows all of the people of the, of the building to get into the, up to the roof level. So works out nicely. So now we brought it down. If you want to, and you can, if you want to look at the elevation, which is on the next page, I believe.
Yeah.
A four point O, which is your, should be your fourth slide. You can see on there where before we, in, in the, in the middle group, on the middle right elevation, you can see where the stair tower now ends. The roof, the elevator overrun ends at the height of the parapet above. So we've not exceeded that at all. And then there is the, that would have been much higher with the stair as well. So in the bottom left elevation, you can also see that the stair tower no longer exceeds above the parapet of the roof, which is four feet higher than the roof deck. So I think the scale of it has been brought down. We're gonna update this, the detail of this building as we go to HTC. And treat it, you know, get all the architectural details, the finishes and so on, certainly for our next meeting with your group as well. But I think I heard somebody had mentioned why we didn't put the stair tower and the elevator on the, on the Haskell side. But I think, again, if you look at the, if you want to look at the site plan, maybe, Pat, you could go back up to, to one or two, you know, number one. Nope, let's, you know what, why is it not, why don't you have mine? Okay, hold on. There should be a drawing A one point O of ours. Let's see if it's in that packet. I thought it was. There we go. It's coming. There we go. So you'll see in there that the stair tower is on the bottom of the sheet where if we flipped it and we keep the building, essentially, we're trying to keep the building essentially in line and with, of the front building as it is. If we put that stair tower on the, on the Haskell property, we would be in a series of trees that are there and also closer to his property than anything that's there. And I know he had a concern about blocking his sun as it is, the sunlight. And one of the reasons we separated the building was to be sympathetic to that, but also as well to provide an access around the building that you could exit and enter with FedEx trucks and vehicles of that nature, moving trucks even. So, and we meet the SU thirty regulations at that point. So I think we, we made the building in scale, it'll be residential in scale, and we're gonna work on the exact details of that over the next few weeks while we get ready for HTC.
Okay, any questions or comments from the commission, Mr. Levy?
Yes, Rudy. It seems like, so, so the, the parking peaks out of the, of, outside of the
Oxid building.
About the, the north side, you know, the, the, underneath the building. Right? So.
Yes.
On that side, it, it would be hard to have some kind of curtain wall that, that hides the parking. So, but on the south side, it doesn't interfere with the parking.
Yeah, in, in other words, could you, could he screen the parking somehow so it's not as visible?
As Madam Chair has pointed out, that, you know, that it would be nice to screen the parking as much as possible. So I, I just want to know if you were concerned about that as well. And I know that it would be a, a reconfiguration of the parking and, and a little bit more work. But just from a point of view of, of. creating a nicer residences, isn't it better to have a southerly view? And open up that southern exposure as opposed to having the stair tower there?
Well, okay, let me answer the first one first. You're correct that the stairs on the parking spaces extend beyond the building on Mr. Haskell's side. We haven't retained a landscape architect yet. We have talked to a couple of them. We'll be bringing them on board. We will put a, there will be screening against the property line on the north side, Mr. Haskell's property, not only for view of the parking, but also to try to limit people trying to walk between the two lots to share parking. On the south side, we do have a small bit of of parking that extends beyond the building, and we can certainly screen that. Not a problem. But the 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 south side of the building where the stair ends, we we have, we have the entrance stairs there, and we also have balconies on that side already. And could we have flipped it? Yes, we could have flipped it. But I think we were anticipating some feedback or bounce back from the Haskell property.
You were being respectful of the neighbor.
Well, that's that's where we're starting about it. But to Mr. Levy's point, there, you know, you could flip everything on that side, but we would be almost to the property, you know, to the setback line or maybe beyond. We'd have to adjust the building. We were trying to keep the building in line with the front building so that we were no closer than building is today to Mr. Haskell. On the other side, it's a parking lot for the the former First Lutheran Church. And there's also an opening in the in the in the landscaping there in the trees. Otherwise, we'd probably have to remove some of the trees that are on Mr. Haskell's property. Well, we can't move his trees, but there's some that are straddling both lots. But we do have balconies on that side, and we do have view amenity out that side, and they will get south sun.
Okay.
Well, you know, you have you have the Haskell windows looking out over your site and your your apartments looking out over his. So if you put the stair tower on the north side, it would serve a lot of different purposes to kind of screen both. And you could certainly make the stair tower something that is not ugly to look at. And and maybe it's more, it's preferable to look at a well sculpted a wall, a stair tower with some interest than somebody's window and looking into their apartment. So I just
Points are well taken.
Okay. Mr. Ridberg, you will consider that. I I would expect that the HTC will influence these decisions as well. Mr. Wells?
Yeah, just a quick question. Mr. Ridberg, you mentioned that there are going to be stairs from the third floor going up to the roof decks, amenity deck, if you will. Is that going to be ADA compliant?
Is that going to be ADA compliant? Well, we don't have a, we don't have an exterior elevator because of that. They will be compliant in regards to rise and run of stairs. We're not bringing the elevator up to that to that level now that we don't have that level. I'd have to double check to see if we're good. I think we're under the ADA requirement for the apartment itself. We may not be required to have an elevator access, but I'll double check the code on that. It's a good point.
Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else? Okay, so just quickly, you'll consider this issue with the screening of the parking. But just in general, we didn't say it, but I I believe, stop me if I'm wrong, guys, that the commission is very, very pleased that you're going to be seeking an HO and preserving this building in perpetuity. Oh, Jackie Kaufman has her hand up. That would be for this application, correct, Mr. Hegney?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Okay, so before we wrap up, we'll let Ms. Kaufman speak. And anybody else from the public who wishes to speak on thirty two Field Point? Please raise your virtual hand. Okay, so Jackie Kaufman will be followed by Jenny Larkin. Go ahead, Ms. Kaufman. You'll need to unmute. There you go.
Good evening or good afternoon. This is nice to speak to you so early. Thank you very much, Mr. Hegney, for for your comments. They accurately reflect a conversation we had earlier today and that he's been in conversation with my client, Mr. Haskell, who is owner of twenty four Field Point Road, the adjacent property that you're speaking about now. Very, very helpful to to address some of the issues by installing a fence. We also are appreciative of your comment about about the importance of parking screening there as well. As Mr. Hegney mentioned, one of the items that we've been looking for as part of it before the final site plan is prepared. And then during its during the presentation of saying to you, a business plan. So we understand both the intensity of the use and the demand for the parking so that we understand that there's sufficient space there for the proposal, even given the HO, any any HO waivers or reductions that may be there. So I know that that's something that he and his client are preparing together. And the the goal of our communications are to protect the property and prevent any parking trespass in the future. So we look forward to that meeting and then prior to any submission to you that we have the opportunity to work out some of those, some of those issues. So thank you for the opportunity today.
Great. Thank you very much, Ms. Kaufman. Anybody? Oh, yes, I do. I have Jenny Larkin has her hand up. Anyone else wishing to speak on thirty two Field Point? Kindly raise your virtual hand. Ms. Larkin, it says you declined, and I know you're a Zoom expert. Did you not wish to speak on?
Oh, no, I just, I, sorry, can you hear me now?
Yes, we can.
I just didn't want to be a panelist because and I actually, I had some questions, but I found the application materials.
So Okay, so you're all set?
My own question, yes, thank you.
And bear in mind, Ms. Larkin, that this is a pre application. So and I believe you are on HTC and you are about to see this.
I am, and you know, my my only, you know, but you've actually brought up things that, you know, that I might have said had I said something.
There you go. So you guys can beat it to a pulp when you get it and save us all the work.
And it's more that the street, what you can see from the street is what, of course, we're always concerned about is the view from the street. So
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Thank you very much. I'm going to take a chance that Ashley Cole, do you wish to speak on on thirty two Field Point? Ms. Cole, do you wish to speak on this application?
Want to say I, as a member of the Sustainability Committee in Community Culture, we always support historic overlay in this especially beautiful building.
Oop. Ms. Cole, could you unmute? It was my fault. Okay, sorry.
Okay, now can everybody hear me now?
Yes, ma'am.
I just want to say, as a member of the Sustainability Committee, and specifically Community Culture, that we support preserving our history in Greenwich. And this is an especially beautiful building, and I love that it's being preserved for history and for Greenwich. That's it.
Great, thank you very much. Okay, so I think that gets everybody. Interestingly, where's Mr. Ridberg?
I'm still here.
Okay, there you are. So interestingly, the thing that's really pretty about that building is not original. I don't think it's that filled in porch that gives it
Yes.
with all the glass. And it's very pretty, but it's not original. It couldn't have been like that originally, but it's, it was probably an open porch. But it's, it makes it lovely and graceful. Okay, so we were starting to say the same thing to you. I think the commission would agree. They'll stop me if they don't. We're very appreciative of an HO, and we're glad that you've moved in this direction. As Mr. McRae was very clear at the last meeting and reminded us again by email because he's absent today. He believes that you have to have an HO in order to separate the buildings. And I I looked at the reg and I think he's correct. And so that allows you the flexibility to separate the buildings and to have some of the potentially the uses not be, not cars pulling up in the front, but pulling up behind and and make it protect the streets, streetscape more. So the other thing is just the question of this issue of of screening. And what else did we talk about? Well, we talked about the location of your stair tower. And
Right.
I frankly leave that to you. I I see the issues and I leave that to you. And of course, the commission does not want to see the business plan. But we will ask about parking and sufficiency of parking for the patients and all of that when you come back. But at this point, you, at this point, we just wanted to address the broader issues. So with that, thank you.
Right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, you beat me to it. Oh, wait. All right, our next application is five fifteen East Putnam LLC for a pre application review of of a project at five, of a residential project at five Brookridge Road. And presenting for the application will be
Should be Mr. Franco or Mr. Dodaro, I think.
I'm not seeing either one of them. Mr. Franco or Mr. Dodaro, would you raise your hands?
Oh, it's probably Morgan, actually.
Morgan Lister?
Yes.
All right. Mr. Lister, if you would unmute, if you want to turn on your camera, that'd be great. Hello. There you guys are. Oh, there are two birds with one stone. There you guys both are. All right, hello, Mr. Franco, and I assume Mr. Lister is with you.
This is Chris Dodaro.
Oh, that's Chris Dodaro, okay.
Yeah, yeah, thank you.
All right, okay.
We all set?
We all set.
Well, thank you, Madam Chairman, members of the commission and staff for giving us the opportunity to talk about our project. I'm here representing five one five East Putnam LLC, which is has been the owner since 2018. The name of the LLC was formerly Millbrook Crossing LLC, but it's the same entity. And back in 2018, and even prior to that, we were working on a project that we called Millbrook Crossing, which was to restore and repurpose four historic properties along the post road. This one being one of them. The other properties we hadn't purchased, but we had under option. And we were going through, we never made it to planning and zoning, but we had gone through HTC and we were working our way through wetlands and some of the other regulatory organizations. And we we were denied at wetlands. So essentially, the project, the project was ended at that point in terms of all of the buildings. The wetlands affected the properties down closer to hillside. And then we, we had purchased and owned the property on Brookridge, which doesn't have any wetlands on it. But in any case, we had gone through a couple of years of work and spent quite a bit of money, and the project didn't go forward. So at that point, I put I put this subject property. By the way, the legal address is five one five East Putnam, but it's also known as five Brookridge. So
Actually, actually, Mr. Mr. Franco, you might want to talk to Patrick about that because we checked yesterday and it was five Brookridge.
Well, yeah, it's funny because on the tax, the tax card that I have from 2018, it was five one five East Putnam, and then the new tax card is five Brookridge. And I was just commenting yesterday that I don't know when that change was made. But it doesn't, it's it's not really particularly relevant in terms of our intentions because we think of the property as five Brookridge. But I was, we had changed the name of the LLC and filed the application under the premise that it was the legal address. But if it's, if it's no longer, it's it's an interesting call. But in any event, so what I did when the when the project, when the prior project ended was we put five Brookridge on the market. We ended up having a contract to sell it to to the Pacora Brothers. And of course, I think we all know that they had proposed an eight thirty G project for eighty six apartment buildings, apartment units on the site, which was, we had, we had no knowledge that they were planning to do that. And we had no connection to that project. In fact, I actually, to this day, think it was possibly the worst project ever proposed in Greenwich history. And I'm sad to have my name in any way associated with it. And then the other thing that happened during that period of time when when they were the contract purchaser was they cut down all the trees on the property. And contrary to what some people think, they did not do that with our permission. There was a due diligence provision in this purchase contract, just a single line that said that they were permitted to cut down trees. And when they were negotiating that, I asked to not have that in there, but they were, they wrecked, they they said that they might need to cut a tree down or several trees down to test for septic and do their due diligence. And so we reluctantly agreed to that. And when I was out of town in November, I got frantic calls saying that the property had been clear cut. So that was something that was really tragic, in my opinion, having at that time been a member of the Greenwich Tree Conservancy. And it's something that we would like to remedy in connection with redeveloping the project, trying to get some appropriate, you know, mature, beautiful trees back on the site because we lost some really fantastic trees. But in any case, after the, after the Pacora deal didn't close, I some time had passed and I was feeling encouraged that perhaps we might go back and try to do, at least for this property, my original project, which was to save, you know, the beautiful and historic home that's on the site and adaptive, you know, to restore and adaptively reuse it as kind of mini units. And then to do in addition onto the building that would be, that would read like subordinate structures and that would have additional units. This is essentially the same design that we had back in 2018. However, we have removed a couple of structures that were proposed at that time. We had proposed a pool house and a swimming pool on the property as well. And they would have served not just this property, but the other units as well. The the total project at that time would have been twenty two units over about six and a half acres. So here we just have one point seven four acres and we're proposing a six units. So we didn't feel the need to have a pool house or a pool. And in addition, we also have or would be seeking to to have septic on the site. And so and we have had, we've gotten approval from the town for a for six unit, two bedroom per unit septic. So total of twelve bedrooms. You know, so again, the goal, the first goal is is to restore and enhance and adaptively reuse the beautiful historic structure. And then the second major goal is to preserve the streetscape, which was something that these properties along this section of the post road have been a have, it's been a goal of preservationists in town for many years to try to preserve these buildings. So while we're not necessarily being able to protect all of all of them at the same time as we were originally proposing, we can at least start with this one. The other thing I would mention is that I think that our project is kind of squarely in line with the 2019 Plan of Conservation and Development. Because the first couple of sections of the P O C D talk about the value of historic preservation and adaptive reusing, adaptively, adaptively reusing historic structures. And then there's also a specific reference to the post road corridor and trying to develop more diverse housing opportunities along the along the post road. And in fact, this project that we're proposing is actually very similar in sort of theory and in, and in fact, to the project that was done a number of years ago. The corner of the post road and Old Church Road next to the Y W C A, because that was a grand house. There was, there were many of them, you know, years ago along the post road. But it was a grand house that was saved and was repurposed with a couple of condominiums. And then they added additional units. So I think this is very So I think this is very, um, consistent with that. And, and they kind of bookend that Putnam, uh, historic district that runs along the post road. The, uh, the other thing that I would mention is that, um, so under the historic overlay, uh, regulation, there are incentives, as you know, for preserving historic buildings. And one of them is with respect to the number of units. And so we would be going for six units, which is what would be permissible based on the size of the property and the zoning. Um, the second incentive is an additional fifteen percent F A R. But we're not seeking any additional F A R for the property. In fact, we don't think that we're going to even use, um, the F A R that's currently available to us under a zoning. I think we'll come in just under that with, when the actual units are fully designed. Um, I think I, yeah, I could take some questions now or I can.
Okay, that's great. We were just giving you time to talk.
Thank you.
So I'm going to pass on the first, the, I'm going to pass on the first question that the commission asked, which is, uh, this, the, the new buildings being clearly subsidiary to the existing structure. If you would comment on that and the proportions of both of, of the buildings relative to the existing structure.
Certainly. And actually, I'd like to, um, have, ask Chris, uh, the architect to speak to that.
Great.
Oh, hi, I'm Chris Dodaro.
Hello.
Hi, Marguerite. So thanks for your time on the board. The, um, so we, we've been part of the project, uh, since the two thousand and eighteen. We had really only worked specifically on the, on the Brookridge, uh, portion of the project. Uh, Chris and I've had a number, I, when I, I would deem them as successful, uh, historic projects, Harbor House, uh, on Shore Road. Uh, a member of the Greenwich Point Conservancy, so we've done all the historic structures at the beach and working on the Chimes Building next. We did the boatyard, uh, Ole's Boatyard, um, uh, project. And of course, the, the Feat Ferris House, the oldest house in Connecticut. So we've, we, we've had a lot of experience and I've worked in other communities as well, New Canaan, Scarsdale, on other historic properties. So I really do enjoy working on them and I, I like all the work, take it very, very seriously and try to do, uh, work that is, uh, architecturally sensitive and it has to, there's always that fine line. It, it has to be architecturally sensitive, but it also has to function. It has to be adaptive reuse. It has to meet, um, you know, the things that can make it economically viable. Otherwise, they're just sort of can be useless exercises. So I call it the Goldilocks. You're always trying to find the, the, the right size bowl of the porridge of the architecture and the, and the function of it. Having worked on so many, uh, historic projects where, uh, the, 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 the team is uh, well aware of the Department of the Interior, um, guidelines for the preservation. And I believe most of the guidelines that Greenwich follows is, is, stems from that, from, from the guidelines. There are four major categories. This fits into the preservation category, which talks about additions to structures, uh, and, and adaptive, adaptive reuses. So, um, and re, you know, rehabilitation. So the, um, in terms of the, the subordinate buildings themselves, secondary or subordinate, it might be the, the, the term to use. The, if you look at, and not to crunch all the numbers on this, but if you look at the, just the area, the footprint areas, uh, the, both what we call the building immediately to the rear of the main house, the, the carriage house, and then the, the sort of the barn house building, the farthest back, the footprint of those buildings, both of them are th- are thirty three percent less uh, than the footprint of the main structure. And then to go along further with the, 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 the main house, uh, the, to the right, when you look at it from the post road, to the right, there was a Porco share as part of that house, which was removed in the pier. So we did some research on that. We're putting that back and as well, doing a small adaptive element, which believe there was a garage element to it. So we're restoring even more of the, uh, existing grandeur, if you will, to the main structure, giving that even more presence, the presence that it had from the post road. So both of the footprint of the, uh, the secondary buildings or subordinate buildings are thirty three percent less. We are not using all of the F A R. And then they're also, they're, they're not as tall, they're, um, less in height. I think that drops in the, uh, a couple few odd feet, uh, in, in the height of those buildings. So automatically by footprint, they're, they're, they're smaller structures. If you go through and I, you know, I could start quoting from the, 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 the interior element, but they, they lay out.
I'm, I'm actually much more focused right now on the, on the, on our regulation itself on six one oh nine, which is where speci- where we have the specification that it be subsidiary. You're saying that basically in total, these two buildings would be sixty six percent roughly of the, of the, of the main structure, of the existing main structure.
It, putting the two, the two separate structures together. Right. If you're, if you're comparing them, the two of them to the main.
Okay, I'm in a, I'm in a from there. So that was our focus and I just wanted to keep it. We do try to keep these discussions relatively short and I know we're going to have public comment. What about from the commission? What else from the commission? What other questions or comments do you have on guidance? Mr. Wells?
Thank you. Uh, yeah, I had two questions and the first one, Mr. D'Addaro is, uh, it looks like the, uh, main house has, uh, what we're calling above ground connector to the carriage house and then to the barn house. But these are three separate residences. I'm just wondering, what is the purpose of connecting these buildings to each other? I mean, why would one want to go from one building to another?
Well, they're.
A nice architectural motif.
Yeah, good, good point. And that's sort of twofold. Chris, you take one, I can take the other.
Okay, so, well, so, um, so actually, they're not three separate buildings. We're proposing that it'll be one building with an addition onto it and hence the connectors. That's important to us because there, we are, there, there are, there's a deed restriction on the property. We, we think that probably the deed restriction has been broken in a lot of other of the neighboring properties, but, but our intention is to still comply with the deed restriction. And so there are actually, there are three deed restrictions. One says it should be used for residential, not commercial purposes. The second sets forth setbacks from the roads, which we are complying with. And the third says that we can have a single dwelling house. And it doesn't say single family residence. It says a single dwelling house. And it's established, it's well established law in the state of Connecticut that a dwelling house can have multiple residences and units within it. So we're, so we're proposing a single, a single dwelling house that has multiple, um, uh, residences within it. So when you're doing an addition and Chris can talk to this, the Department of the Interior Guidelines, um, they favor connectors and what they call hyphens, um, between buildings because it, um, allows for more of the, the historical structure to remain in place. And it just provides, um, an ability to have, you know, context with the new buildings. You might want to think more about that.
Uh, in brief, that's essentially the, the, the point. They specifically lay that out, Department Interior Guidelines. We've used it before. We have one that's been used very successfully at, back at Feet Ferris House. There is a tenuous glass connector between the original Feet Ferris House. So it doesn't look like you've taken one building and just grown it into a much larger, bigger and different building. So the short of it is, you allow the existing historic structure to stand, to read unto itself unadulterated or unmolested.
Okay, uh, just two more questions. These connectors, are, are there doors at the end of them? I mean, do you open a door and go through the connector and open a door in the other building? Or do they, you know, again, can you go from one building to the other?
There, there would be, I mean, we don't know all the specifics yet in terms of developing, but yes, the idea initially was that there's one door from one and one door to the other and connected at the foundation level, which technically.
Okay, uh, final question, and that is, it looks like, uh, from your plans, there's a lot of, uh, screening between the main house and East Putnam Avenue. And I mean, you don't like the clear cut, but you can certainly see the house. I just wonder, eh, are you to defeat the purpose of historic overlay if you screen it such that people on the post road can't see that beautiful house that you're going to build?
Well, you know, it's the, um, the, the fact is that I, 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 I agree that it's great to be able to see the house. And so we're not proposing, it's, we're actually not proposing screening to screen the, the residences from the post road. We're just actually proposing trees to sort of reme- remediate the loss that occurred when the clear cutting happened. Because there were two very, very important trees, um, in the front of the building. One was a, one was a beech tree and one was, I believe, a walnut, um, very large. And then, so we want to do, we, we, our intention is to do a, a beautiful landscaping plan that will enhance the project, but we also want to replace and remediate the loss of some of, of those mature trees. And so we're not looking, we're really not looking to hide the building. I, I think the building is going to be beautiful and, and I don't think, and, 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 and most of the approach to the building is from the rear, you know, in terms of how people, um, come and go. So like, uh, we would agree that we would love the building to be beautiful and viewed by the community, but, but we also want to remediate the loss of, of those beautiful trees.
Great, thank you.
I, I wanted to actually add to, uh, what Chris had, was said earlier when we, when he was talking about the subordinate, uh, nature of the addition. Because under the Department of Interior, um, Guidelines, because I've, I've been working with these for many years myself. When they talk about, and, and, and our H O reg is actually written with much language that is, that comes from this, the Department of Interior standards, because they're used at, at federal, state and municipal, municipal levels all the time. And so our H O regulation says that the, that any new construction should be, I believe, compatible and secondary.
Yes.
And, and, and when you, and I can share this with you, but there's a, there's a, there's a, there's about a twenty page brief that the Department of Interior puts out. It talks about new exterior additions to historic buildings, preservation guidelines. And they talk, they do talk about secondary, but what they're really talking about is subordinate. And they, eh, eh, and because, in other words, that the new construction should look subordinate. And there are, and they talk about different techniques and different standards. One is size and massing, but equally important is placement, that they're, you know, that they're placed in the rear or on secondary sides of the property. Um, another talks about context. For example, a barn is always considered to be subordinate to the main house. Historically, on granite properties or even farms, barns sometimes are even larger, you know, than, but the, the main house. But they're clearly a subordinate structure in terms of the context. So that, so the department doesn't, the interior guidelines don't just deal with size, although we did address size and massing. But they, it talks about placement, it talks about context and other factors like that. So our goal was to really create something here that would look like, that could have been a, a grand home, you know, on the post road at the turn of the last century with, with, uh, subordinate buildings.
Okay, I'm going to go to, uh, Mr. Wells, are you done? All right, Mr. Yesky.
Yes, thank you. I've got a bunch of questions. Um, this is an impressive project. As you may know, we changed the H O regulations to try to encourage more of this. We've had a few, but not many. And I want to come back to that, but let me get out of the way a couple of technical questions. You mentioned the other projects were denied by inland waterways. But I remember when the, the application was put in, there was also a drainage issue. Are you anticipating any kind of a drainage issue on this lot unlike the other?
No, I don't think so. Uh, we will, and we can address that like with data, um, I guess when we file a full application. But the, the principal problems with the prior application was that the Brothers Brook runs between down, uh, between, down near hillside and it floods. Um, so there was a big issue with potential flooding of, of the garages. And there was really no way to get around it because we wanted to have garages below the building. We actually needed to because the, the, the Historic District Commission didn't want us to have parking on the surface in the front of the building.
It's a coverage issue.
Yeah, it was a coverage issue. So, so the, the, the water and the drainage issues were down, um, were down on the lower properties. This property is kind of high and dry.
Right.
We have, we're developing, uh, we, we're, we're developing significantly less. I mean, we, we will have more green space than is required under the R twenty zone. And we, um, and the, and the, the engineers are going to be providing appropriate drainage, you know, right on site. So that we'll be handling our water on site.
Now, we all know that you have a lot of experience in historical development. Um, any thoughts? I mean, are there other things you'd like to have done on this lot? But maybe our regulations inhibited it because we, we struggled with that a couple of years ago. And we're trying to encourage more H Os, i- if they're, if they fit. This one is very attractive. We'll have to get into the detail. Obviously, we don't know. But is there something about our regulations that you had a problem with on this particular lot?
I, I would say no. I thought, I think the regulations are excellent. I, I, I was familiar with the prior regulation and then with the changes. And I think the, the incentives, one of the incentives of the new regulation was the ability to put additional units in new construction as opposed to just the prior existing. And then the incentive for the number of lots went from one point two to one point five, you know, multiplier. So the, these were very helpful. I, you know, honestly, I, I try to approach most of my preservation projects from, I don't know how to explain it other than maybe from a modest perspective, because I, I believe that you should try to do, just approach things, you know, with respect for the historic structure and to not overburden, you know, neighborhoods. Um, because I don't ever want to leave a neighborhood where it's off. I was born and raised in this town and I have turned down projects that I didn't think were appropriate. Um, you know, that people have shown to me, but I, and so the projects that we have done, I'm proud of, and I think that this will be a beautiful project if we're permitted to go forward with it. And I know that, um, uh, you know, I know that there were a lot of concerns, you know, from neighbors. Uh, particularly what, you know, when the eight thirty G was going to go in there. Some of the neighbors who had had concerns about our project contacted me when that was happening and asked me if I would be willing to go back and do the, you know, do the old project. At the time that I was contacted, it was under contract to, to be sold, so I didn't have that option. But then when that contract fell apart, you know, I started giving serious thought to whether I would, it would make sense to go back and do this project. I really think it's the right project. It's the right location for, um, you know, for a project like this. It's close to, it's close to the post road. We're not changing all, the infrastructure on the site, I'm pointing to the design, which is on my screen. You know, the driveway that we show is the existing driveway that's there. You know, the main house is in the existing, um, position. We've tucked the, uh, carriage barn and the barn barn, you know, sort of in the rear of the property as far away from the road as possible, so that you still get the sense of large lawn and open space.
Which was, Church Street does the same.
Yeah, which Church Street does the same. Um, we, you know, we're, we're certainly flexible, you know, with, with, with comments, but we have tried very hard to have a beautiful project. I also would like to just mention that in the, in the prior iteration back in two thousand and eighteen, we, we took our project to the Historic District Commission. We're, we're, this, we're not scheduled to go until September with this iteration, but this same design was presented to the HTC back in two thousand and eighteen. And we talked among other things about the new buildings and whether they were satisfactorily subordinate. And the HTC approved the project by eleven to zero vote.
I'm going to run out of my time. The chairman's going to yank me. So maybe my last couple of questions, we can defer. I would love to talk more about, uh, other areas of town, because one of the things we attempted to do was isolate on different areas of the town. You mentioned the post road, uh, but at some point, maybe we have a, a further discussion about other historic areas that you could apply your models to.
I'd be, I would be very happy to do that.
Yeah, I do have one question that the chair is going to yank me on. Um, I'm a real estate finance guy. It, this project, when you have these units, I mean, i- is it economically or is it, is it's, is it something that just is, is?
He wouldn't be doing it if he wasn't making money.
Yeah. Well, I, well, I would say, I would just say this, I'm not going to get rich.
And by the way, we have no right to ask that question and you don't have to answer it. It's just that that has always been part of the problem and that's why we provided the incentives, you know, to give people, uh, enough. And that's why we provided the incentives, you know, to give people, uh, enough financial incentive to do this sort of a thing. Because not everybody is a billionaire, right? And not that you are, but I'm, I'm saying, you know where I'm going with that.
No, I do. And I would just say this, you know, half of my preservation work in town is on the nonprofit basis. Cause I'm the president and the co-founder of the Greenwich Point Conservancy. We're in our twentieth year now. And so we do all of that work. Including the Feek Ferris House on a, for, you know, that's my nonprofit work that I do. But then. When I do projects like the Harbor House or some of these other projects, um, I definitely, you know, wo-. Wo- work hard to have a, an economic model where I don't lose money and I make some money. But like I said, I'm not gonna get rich on these projects, but, but I feel proud. Of doing great work. And of course, if I can make a little bit of money, that's good.
Does this project fall into the nonprofit or the profit?
No, no, no. This is, this is a for pro, this is a for-profit project. I will say this, I just am finishing.
Very clever.
Well, I don't want to take too long, but I, I.
No, no, I got it. And I'm way over, uh, I'm surprised the chair hasn't yanked me already. So I'm way over on our. This is like Congress. You get so many minutes and you get yanked. And we're trying to keep these small and I'm always complaining about it. So. My, done. I'd love to have a future conversation and end of questions. Thank you.
And, thank you.
Mr. Levy.
Uh, yes, thanks, Madam Chair. Um, I just wanted to mention that it seems to me that, uh, there's. Um, a lot of thought that's, that's, um, presented here. And the, and, and just the idea of, uh, the village lawn, uh, the connectors which create. Uh, a nice, uh, communal idea about sharing spaces. Uh, but, uh, to, to make it successful, you know, one of the things that I've seen in, in kind of these New England campuses. Uh, post-colonial campuses is that they, the, they usually connect, these connectors connect, um. Common spaces like porches kind of thing, going for, going from porch to porch. Um, so if there's some kind of idea that you can develop here about connecting in a way that, that. Um, supports the communal nature of these six units. Uh, that would be a, a nice way of reintroducing a, a, a very strong and important colonial idea. Or proposed colonial idea about New England.
A terrific idea.
I like that idea. And, and in fact, if you look at, if you have the site plan available, it's on my screen. In the far corner, there's a, there's a, a pre-existing garage or, um. And that we think might be a common element. It might be a meeting space, um, you know, could be. A gym. It could, it could be, so, and one of the things we've talked about is having these connectors. Because they run along and gets you pretty close to that structure. So one, one idea that we had was about the connectors was to have them be a covered space so that you could get pretty close to that. Communal area without having to go out in the elements.
Okay. That good, Mr. Levy?
Thank you.
Alrighty. Oh, okay.
Yeah, there's this one, yeah.
Okay. Um. If nobody objects, we could turn to, um, anybody else? Um, Mary, are you good?
I'm, I'm good, Madam Chair. Thank you.
And Mr. Barilak as well, so you're not gonna ask if it's profitable, that's.
Did we ask that? I'm sorry. I, I must have forgot.
No, well, actually, um, the, the back of my mind was that. As an H O, it's not required to have below market units, which is a, another interesting question. Um, yes, Mr. Barilak, I was thinking about that. I'm gonna turn to the public for comment. Mr. Hamilton, you are the first. Followed by Susan Myers, and then I believe, was it Jenny Larkin? If you would raise your hand. And anybody else who wishes to speak about Five Brookridge, please do so. Just raise your hands. And Mr. Hamilton, if you would go ahead. Uh, Mr. Hamilton, if you would go ahead.
Yeah, that should do. Did I do it?
Yep, that did it.
So, um, I'm gonna defer, uh, let Susan start off because she's got a, a brilliant overview. Uh, presentation that's short, uh, the comments are short and brief, but mine, mine are really ancillary at this point and they're gonna come on top of it. Mine are important, but I think the overview and the basic setting the stage, I'd like to leave to, to Susan Myers, who's my colleague and neighbor. And, and who we work very closely with.
Is she with you? Because I'm trying to promote her and I'm not. Oh, there she comes. Okay, great. Okay, hello, Ms. Myers. If you would unmute, you're all ready to go.
Okay. Good afternoon. Thanks for letting me, um, given the opportunity to, uh, comment on this application. Um, is it working?
Um, no, are you sharing your screen?
Um, I thought I was.
Okay. Um, you just muted yourself. I'm gonna give you a screen sharing ability, uh, but there's only one thing. You're gonna have to email your presentation to us, okay?
Oh, can you just hear me? Is that good enough?
Yes, that would be fine. That would be easier than, okay, all right. So we can hear you and if you can turn on your camera, that's great, but if you. Don't feel like it, that's great too. All right, if you would go ahead. Hi.
Hi, there I am. Um, so I, thanks a lot for letting me comment on this, uh, pre-application. Um, so, um, typically granting a historic overlay to a property is a win for historical interests of this community. However, Five Brookridge, also known as five fifteen East Putnam, is not a typical situation. This property is bound by a hundred year old deed restriction, which was cleverly created to preserve the historic integrity of this property. As well as its three neighbors to the west on the post road and all of the homes on the mac, map of Brookridge. The original developer, Mr. Timmons, had the foresight to protect these historical properties long be, so, long before zoning existed. Um, he was cognizant of the fact that five fifteen East Putnam, as well as its neighbors, were a major thoroughfare and would be vulnerable to commercial businesses. The deed restriction he created is the reason why the, the historical streetscape exists today. As well as so many oversized properties and historical homes on Brookridge Drive and Hillside Road. Where every lot is larger than the R twenty and R A one zone they are in. So he effectively did the historical preservation work for us. Um, I am aware of the fact that planning and zoning is not in a position to enforce the deed restriction. However, in this case, it aligns with the interest of historical preservation and something I believe you should acknowledge and support. And I would like to add that if Mr. Franco chooses to pursue anything other than a single family home restoration for this property. And violate his deed restriction, those of us who are bound by the restriction will not hesitate to once again. File lawsuit against him in the Stanford Superior Court to enforce it. So in the interest of the town's resources and the already taxed P and Z agenda, we would greatly appreciate it if the commission would deny this application. And save us all the time and money of going through this all over again. Um, the reason we are constantly finding ourselves defending this single use home is, and the neighbors along the post road is due to the fact that they are in the R twenty zone. The R twenty zone misrepresents what is possible for this property and its three neighbors to the west. The first being the fact that it's not on the sewer map and we have been assured they never will be. And as the various experts have meticulously pointed out over the years, these homes cannot be enlarged due to the increased flooding runoff. Um, and septic wastewater, it would put, um, further, um, stress on the delicate watershed downhill from the property. Nor can this critical emergency car to be taxed with any additional traffic congestion. The R twenty zone misleads buyers as to what is possible for these properties and continues to waste the time and money of the neighbors and, and the town. For this reason, the neighbors will be filing an application shortly to request the zoning be changed to R A one. To be consistent with the surrounding neighborhood and the physical limitations of the properties. The onus is not on the neighbors or the commission to bail Mr. Franco out of his poorly researched investment or to maximize his returns on his ill-conceived projects. He is not the first developer to think he knows what's best for our neighborhood and feels deserving of the concessions. His neighbors who have spent many more years than him actually living here and maintaining those properties have never been granted. We all bought our properties on Brookridge Drive and Hillside Road to raise our families and be part of a historical community. And not to sub, divide our lots to make a quick profit and destroy the unique character of our neighborhood. All of us are tired of looking at Mr. Franco's clear-cut property with massive defeated-looking heritage tree stumps and a dilapidated house. I am the abiding neighbor and any plan that would promise to rectify this si- situation seems enticing. But I cannot lose sight of the larger picture and the ramifications a multifamily housing product, project would have on the integrity of our neighborhood. Based on our one acre zoning, many properties on our street could have doubled and some tripled the amount of houses on their properties. If the deed restriction was lifted and we are left with only zoning regulations. So if the goal of the Historic Overlay Committee is to preserve the historical streets, streetscapes and homes, I suggest you look at the larger picture. And the ramifications your decision would have on the overall neighborhood and its many historical homes. Other than increasing his profit, profit, there's nothing, Mr. Franco. Isn't, nothing preventing Mr. Franco from bringing his single-family historical house back to life. Like his neighbor at five oh five East, East Putnam recently did. Um, I have attached a copy of, of, um, some of the closing documents. I, I won't go through them now, the specifics of the books and the pages. But I just wanted to point out that, um, this house specifically, there's been some merging of, of our, um, deeds for some reason. But, um, there, I just wanted to point out that this house can only have one dwelling. Nine Brookridge can, in its deed, has two, but this has one, but somehow it got merged in. All the paperwork is there if you care to look at it, but. Um, I just wanted to, um, to specifically point that out. Um, I know we talked about connecting houses to create one dwelling, but you know, that's not, not the intention of this deed and, and we, we, um. My, as I mentioned, um, we plan to enforce it if it's not, and it looks anything other than what we have now.
Okay. Thank you very much, ma'am.
Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Hamilton, if you want to add anything to that, we are looking for shorter comments. I didn't realize how long, uh, we, we. Keep these pre-applications as short as we can. Mr. Hamilton, would you?
Right. I'll make two very short comments. Thank you, as, uh, Chairwoman. Um, I really appreciate all the effort and the thoughtfulness and. And actually, I appreciate, I really appreciate what Chris is trying to accomplish. Um. I want to point out a couple of things about the deed restriction or one in particular. The reading of the deed restriction is roughly as follows. Um, as set forth on deed recording volume one hundred two at page three of twenty. In which the property shall not be used for any business purpose whatsoever, for any purpose other, listen carefully. Any press, uh, purpose other than a strictly private residence. No more than one dwelling shall be erected on the property and that no part of the dwelling should be erected less than eighty feet. From the post road and which was Brookridge Drive. So the, the deed restriction does apply. It's been, it's been in a force, it's been in for, uh, in force since around nineteen oh seven. Uh, the original twenty-five properties are now, have been subdivided properly in accordance with the deed restriction. Six or seven times over the years, they're probably close to thirty or thirty-five state individual residences now. All complying with the one and a half, the implied one and a half residences, re, one and a half acres per, per, uh, per resident. So, uh, that, that is, uh, that point. And the second one is maybe a little more subtle. The, the town has a substantial problem, as we all know, with affordable housing. I went back and gave myself a crash course. It's always a lot of fun to go back in and go through the, the affordable housing, uh, elaborate of regulations and rules, but I tried my best. Came away with, uh, one observation that this doesn't help our case in affordable housing, uh, at all. In fact, sets us back. Uh, we don't need, we, we got a major problem. The problem is growing. The affordable housing component of our housing stock is actually shrinking. Instead of growing, which was promised a year, two years ago, the task force of this, of that. And nothing has really stopped this unbelievable financial juggernaut from moving ahead and building these five, six, seven million dollar condos. Everywhere in town. The last thing we need as a town is more of that. And the, the, not to mention that, that affordable housing is, is probably. O- overlooked for ten or twenty years. It was always the right way to do. We could have handled it earlier, did not. Well, now we're behind the eight ball. Every four market price unit we bring on burdens us substantially more because we have to bring in. Uh, at least a ten percent of that, of those units as affordable, or we're gonna be further and further behind. So, um. That's it. Short, hopefully sweet, and thanks everyone for their time and, and, uh, and opportunity to. To share our thoughts with you. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Hamilton. Um, before we go to, uh, Ms. Larkin, uh, Mr. Leroy, would you like to comment on the interface? Between P and Z and deed restrictions?
There is none, Madam Chair.
Would you like to clarify that?
The private deed restrictions are a civil covenant between property owners that is outside of the purview of zoning. So the commission can only uphold what is in the zoning regulations and the decisions related to those. So, uh, I, uh, while I appreciate everybody making us aware and then we understand the ramifications of that. If someone acts, uh, acts on the deed restriction, it's not, it, it can't preclude us from doing our. The commission's responsibility under the zoning regulations and the town charter.
So, um, Mr. Hamilton and Ms. Myers, you would be acting. Uh, this would not be within our legal scope of authority to consider the deed restrictions. As we act on this application. Now, this is a pre-app, so we're not acting, but just so you know, it's not within our legal scope of authority. Uh, Ms. Larkin, I've enabled you to speak if you wish to go ahead and please do try to stay within two minutes. Sorry, I thought I had enabled you to speak. There you go.
That's okay. So boy, I just heard a lot of stuff and I don't wanna go on it. But a lot of what was said, I, I, you know, I think is kind of inaccurate, but I'm not gonna go point by point. Um, I do also want to say that I'm really happy to think that one of the houses that was proposed for Millbrook Crossing. Could be, uh, preserved in perpetuity. Um, and this is me as a neighbor, you know, because I own three Hillside Road, which was the one that. Uh, prevented probably the rest of the other ones from, you know, the project, because I'm the one that's the cen- center of the, of the flooding. And I, uh, the thing I did want to say is that these deed restrictions do nothing. Nothing. To protect historic properties. Because my house, since I first tried to sell it in nineteen ninety-eight, was a tear down. So, so it has been a tear down since nineteen ninety-eight. Um, I continued on it. Like Mr. Franco, I actually care about this town. Um, and. Money is not the thing that really motivates me as much as it might some other people. So I have continued to double down on trying to stay in that house. My children now live there. But, um, you know, and I'm hoping that it can be preserved for generations. I also am not a rich person. But I do care about the neighborhood, the streetscape, the historic property, unlike others who may say that. But, you know, when it comes to preserving historic buildings, there are the ones who actually preserve them and, and the, the ones that say they'd like to preserve them. My house, uh, on one point three acres and a half acre zone could have a, uh, thirteen thousand square foot single-family. House. I mean, it's just a fact. The F A R allows a thirteen thousand square foot single-family house. It would probably have to be on stilts and maybe the front yard would be a rain garden. And it would, you know, I can imagine something maybe with a green roof, that all those people that like sustainability would think it was lovely. But I want to preserve that old house that's here. So. That right there, I just, again, I think it's an empty argument about, um, preserving history by this deed restriction. Um, I also remember getting a call when the eight thirty G project was proposed. From, I, I believe it was one of the neighbors on the call today, on the meeting today. Begging me to help them fight this, uh, incursion on the neighborhood of eight thirty G. You know, affordable housing and this large property. So I said, well, I can't donate money, um, but, you know, uh, I do. Wish that that house could be preserved. And so I did support it being saved. And, uh, likewise, uh, somebody on this, uh, meeting, I believe, had a subdivided property with both. You know, two completely different mailing addresses on their house. So I, I guess it sounds like they were able to make some changes at some point before. Um, you know, today, but, uh, I thought that there were two properties on one of the neighbors, uh, two mail, uh, mailing addresses on one of the neighbors' property. So that's really all I have to say. Um, you know, I guess I, that, that's, yeah, that's it.
Thank you very much, Ms. Larkin. Alrighty, um, that looks like it's it for the public comment. Uh, your plan at this point is to go on to the H D C for a certificate of appropriateness. Uh, and do the rest of the hurdles. Um. I, Mr. Alexander just raised his hand. I had just closed the public comment. Um. I, I guess we're, um. All right, Mr. Alexander, if you would go ahead. Mr. Alexander? All right, I'm gonna, I'm gonna go ahead. I, I'm assuming you did, okay.
He's gotta unmute.
I know he has to unmute, but he's not unmuting.
How about now?
There you go. Okay, Mr. Alexander, if you would. There you go. Okay, Mr. Alexander, if you would kindly keep it to below two minutes.
I just want to thank the last few speakers and gives me some hope that we might actually preserve part of the town. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much, Mr. Alexander. Sorry. Alrighty. Okay, so um, you're going to go to H D C to work on the certificate of appropriateness and you'll, I, our questions, we'll see what they say. As you pointed out, six one oh nine is looking for that relationship. Uh, the deed restriction that may exist on the property is not within our statutory scope, as you probably know. And uh, I believe you are not in a flood zone. So you would not be having to take flood zone measures. Uh, at least that's what the FEMA map looked like this weekend. I have, I have no further comment or guidance. Does anybody else on the commission have further comment? No. Okay. So thank you very much to both of you.
Thank you very much. We appreciate the opportunity.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. With that, we will go to the public hearing. And we're going to limit public comment to two minutes from here on in, okay? Cause it got a little long. Uh, uh, Mr. Bazili, sound check?
Uh, hello. Yes, everything's fine, except the one time Mr. Barilak spoke, I barely heard a word.
Same here. Mr. Barilak, if you would get closer to the mic when you're speaking, I had a hard time hearing you as well.
I was unaware that I'd said anything at all, but I will try.
No, you asked a question in the first applicant. And you are hard to hear.
I, 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 that, that I'm rarely accused of, of being hard to hear.
I was going to say that to Mr. Bazili, but I figured, yeah, okay, you're good now. You're good now.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Alrighty, so now we go to the public hearing. The first application, uh, as you know, uh, application number three is postponed. The first application is Jonathan and Echo Sang, Sanga Horton for a zoning map amendment to rezone property at a hundred Brookside Drive from the R A one to the R twelve. Seated on this application are Levy. Uh, you got enough time, I think, Dennis. It's five thirty-six. Okay. Levy Yeski, Wells, Barilak and Albin. Levy Yeski, Wells, Barilak and Albin. And with that, we will begin. We got an applicant?
Yes, Ed Davis is going to be representing, or has been.
Yeah. Oh, that's right, Dee. Mr. Davis.
You may need to connect to your uh, microphone.
Yeah, we can't hear you. No, now you're muted. Sometimes you need to, it, there's a little Chevron, a little arrow saying next to your microphone button on your Zoom screen. If you click on that, it'll, you can turn up your input. It sounds like your input is turned down.
Okay, this is not.
There you go.
Bravo. We can hear you.
Okay.
Yay. Perfect. Zoom is nice in the air-conditioned comfort, but sometimes people are, every now and then we, hello, Mr. Davis, if you can figure out how to turn on your video, great, otherwise, don't worry.
I can see you.
Yeah, well, we can't see you.
Oh, there we go. That should help. There we are.
There you go. Perfect.
Okay, good.
That's great. Okay, where you go?
Well, this uh, this application is asking for a, an adjustment to the zoning map to bring the Horton property at one hundred Brookside into compliance with zoning regulations. And right now, there are no proposed projects for the property. But in two thousand eleven, we were granted an F A R variance, which uh, is rare occurrence. So we were very pleased with that. But basically that variance um, kept within the existing square footage. We just kind of stole from Peter to pay Paul.
Yep.
And um, but there are still existing non-conformities with the property located in the one acre um, designation.
Okay. Um, one of the things we asked yes, I asked yesterday is your client is, is aware that they back into a floodway and that the rear portion of their property is in the, is in a flood zone.
Yes, that's correct.
So that any future development or redevelopment of the property would be, would be driven, would be controlled by those factors?
Absolutely. And uh, FEMA hasn't come out with new flood maps yet.
Yeah, they're kind of, they're kind of almost with us.
Okay, well, the, the uh, variance in two thousand eleven was under the F series. The two thousand ten maps uh, currently were using the G series, which was um, two thousand thirteen, which came out after Sandy, but did not reflect Sandy. So we're waiting to see what they come up with next.
Okay. I, cause you, you know, there's a lot of talk about limiting development in the future. But as someone pointed out when I raised this yesterday, that development is not limited at this point. Um, the, does, the only thing outstanding, I believe, Patrick, on this application right now is the answer from WestCog on the rezoning.
We, we don't send rezonings. This is all map amendments, but they don't, this doesn't have any, it has no, it's, there's a local matter from WestCog. I thought we had that email from them.
I, we don't have it in our material.
Uh, I am ninety percent positive that we got it. So I will find it right now.
As far as I know, that's the only thing that's outstanding.
And they were noticed uh, you know, more than thirty days ago. So.
Okay. Well, in the meantime, while you look for it, that's, I had written to you about it earlier today because I couldn't find it. Does anybody on the commission have any comments or questions about this proposal to rezone? Doesn't look like it.
Maybe, can the applicant explain why um, they want to resolve?
Uh, yes, sir. The um, primary benefit is to eliminate any of the um, non-compliance aspects of the property, which one, make it more marketable, give the owners or future owners an ability to do something to the property uh, keeping it within the zoning guidelines. But right now, the um, if, after what we went through in two thousand eleven, knowing that would probably be far more difficult now because we wouldn't have the hardship. It was simply just bringing the property into compliance.
Uh, yes, uh, uh, but by changing zoning, your, uh, you may be um, uh, creating um,
The opportunity for more development.
Well, well, yes, uh, but you're creating a lot that will no longer be um, uh, as, as conforming to the rest of the neighborhood.
Well, with the one acre zoning, um, that's correct. With the uh, R twelve zones across the street and to the south, um, the property meeting the setbacks uh, because of the narrowness of the lot is still con- constrained as far as substantial um, development.
Uh, noted that, um, yes, I mean, um, that, that the, what I'm struggling with is uh, because you are legally non-conforming, you're, you, you have a um, a situation where you're, you're safe. Um, and uh, it, it's um, uh, and if you want to, and, and so you, just as long as you don't make it any more non-conforming, um, you can do what you want with the property. Uh, by, by changing zoning, uh, you're uh, perhaps uh, going far beyond that and um, uh, possibly impacting the uh, neighborhood.
Well, the, I, I believe that with the current uh, F A R being non-conforming, we are very limited in terms of doing much of anything. Um, we're on these, um, we're just, yeah, we're just over the green area of seventy, required seventy-two percent at seventy-four percent now, which between um, not expanding F A R and being up against the ceiling for the green area, we're pretty constrained as to what we could do in any event. Whereas if going to R twelve, there's a lot.
Well, your green area, actually, your green area, everybody gets this backwards. Your green area is actually greater than the minimum that's required.
Right.
So you're actually fine with your current green area. That is not a limiting factor for you.
Well, within two percent.
But you've got enough green area. Your issue is that you are point one eight, point one nine, if you will, F A R, which is versus a point one three five in the one acre.
Correct.
So your limiting factor at the moment is your F A R.
Yes.
Um, I'm also not, I, I, I meant to ask Patrick yesterday why you're listed as three stories. Cause I looked at that building, it kind of still, I mean, just looking at it, it looked like two and a half to me, but I must be missing something. Okay, so.
No, no, I, I can address that. It, it is three stories because the third floor where the dormers are, there's actually a.
There's more than forty percent?
It is more than forty percent and.
That's all I needed to know. You can stop. You can stop. Okay. Um, so you're also non-conforming for lot shape for the hundred and ten foot lot shape as well as the coverage.
Correct.
You're conforming for F A R. So uh, to their point, um, I guess, Peter, um, I'm trying to look at the numbers. What, Peter, you keep asking. I shouldn't be answering the, for the applicant. Go ahead.
Okay, well, um, uh, I, I'm just, you know, uh, I am struggling with this idea of, 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 um, a zoning change. I, I, um, if it's not painfully obvious to do a zoning change, I, I just feel as though um, I should be, that, that caution is, is advised. So I feel very cautious about.
So, yeah, I mean, I did too. I, I was struggling with this a lot over the weekend and I was still struggling. You know, I'm always thinking about. The property is twenty-three, a little, a shade under twenty-three thousand square feet. So it's very undersized in the R A one. It's half of what you would have to have in the R A one. When we took this zone to R A one, we made this property be non-conforming. And what, um, so that's really what they're arguing. It's non-conforming for what's built because they are at roughly half of, of one acre instead of that. So um, that's their argument.
It, I understand, but it's a distinction without much of a difference because um, they're, they're not in any jeopardy of anything. It's, it's grandfathered. So uh, I, I, I'm
Mm-hmm, yeah.
A little dense here. Uh, if, if it's not.
In other words, what you're thinking is when they want to, when they're ready to expand or rebuild or whatever, why don't they come in and say, hey, we want to do this. Can we rezone now? That's what you're going rather than right now. But my take would be since they're being represented by an architect, I would give you, my first guess would be that they are planning on doing work of some kind on this property. Mr. LaRoe, you wanted to add something? Mr. LaRoe? Yeah.
Yes, Madam Chair. You had asked about the referral to WestCog and this is not within a five hundred feet of the boundary, so it, it doesn't require their input.
So the only thing we needed was the Z E O.
Uh, correct. And only to talk about what, you know,
Okay.
any variances or other aspects of zoning that may be of interest.
Okay.
I think that if they come in with an application and, and, and need um, uh, some kind of variance that doesn't prejudice their, their application. So I, I would love to see uh, this come in under a, a different kind of application. So.
Okay. Any other comments from the commission? No comments from the commission. Um, yeah, question for you, Mr. Levy, before we go to public comment. Is there any additional information that you would want from the applicant on this?
What their plans are.
Well, I'm going to go to public comment because the owner has his hand up. So I will see what he wants to share with us. And all right, there goes Mr. Horton. Mr. Horton, if you would unmute, you're all set. Great. Hello, Mr. Horton.
Good e, good evening, everyone. Um, and I appreciate the opportunity to speak. Um, first of all, just very briefly, I know, I'm very limited time wise, but um, I did listen to the earlier part of the hearing about um, developments in the town. And, and we really strongly support the, the maintenance of the character of the town and all the efforts the town makes to, to kind of maintain the environment and the amenity. Um, we bought the house, um, I guess, um, eleven, twelve years ago now. Um, and the house originally had a coach house in the flood zone. And well, our original plan, we worked with Ed, was to actually to develop the, the coach house and, and use that as a, a larger garage. And that turned out to be impractical. And as Ed described, we, I think, as you said, robbed Peter to pay Paul. And so, so we, um, we, we've incorporated it to create a small garage. Um, we, just to be really clear, we don't have grandiose plans for the plot, the plot. But when we've been working with Ed, looking at things about putting a further Porsche kosher or further, further space to the house, all of the challenges that arise, the, the house is a little bit, I guess, like any old property. It, it's fits the lot very well, but it makes it quite hard to do, to do things. And so, you know, the question for us was, how can we approach a way of looking at the property and giving us some additional amenity? And I think, you know, I'll let Ed speak because obviously he has a much clearer understanding about zoning. But the sense was that that would give us some flexibility in our discussions going forward. And that, that was the reason why we raised this. And is that, is that a fair, for, first summation, Ed?
Absolutely. The um, yeah, it was just a matter of giving you going forward in the future, some flexibility in terms of dealing within the zoning guidelines and um, doing what you, what might be available to improve the situation on the property.
So, um, putting it another way, Peter Levy, and I, I'm just going to throw this, what I've been thinking. It's, it's not very much to do with what they're planning on, but that when we do, when we zone an area, we try not to create noncon, we try not to make non-conformities. And here we made it, uh, put in a lot into this zone that is small for the zone and therefore automatically becomes non-conforming and is limited in any as in, as Mr. Horton noted, and then the amenities that they could add. And that we, P O C D doesn't tell us to do this, but state statute tries for us to eliminate non-conformities where we can, which was what Patrick was arguing on behalf of yesterday. And I was concerned about the flood zone. They're clearly aware of it. I now understand why they have a cement patio in their backyard. That's their. And I was concerned about the flood zone. They're clearly aware of it. I now understand why they have a cement patio in their backyard. That's their old garagi thing, which I would suggest they, they get rid of. I'm just telling you, it's not a good idea to have impervious in a flood zone. It just makes everything worse. Get rid of anything you can. I know it's expensive, but, um, so that would be the thing is that our job is to eliminate nonconformities. Um, although that's not the task in a rezone, we need to be thinking about the fact that this got zoned too small. Um, okay. Anybody else from the public wish to speak? Thank you, Mr. Horton, for joining us.
Yeah, thank you for the opportunity.
And anybody, any have, anybody have any more questions also for, uh, Mr. Davis? I would be willing to close this application. Uh, does anybody object to closing it at this time?
No.
No.
All right. Okay. So this application is hereby closed. And, um, we will move on. Thank you mu- very much, Mr. Davis. We decide on the public hearing applications at the end of the meeting. Unless the chair and her colleagues poop out.
Well, thank you.
But we'll try hard not to. Thank you very much, sir.
Have a good evening.
All right. Okay. So our next item on the public hearing is the trustees of the convent of the Sacred Heart for a final site plan and special permit to replace and expand the existing six tennis courts. This is at one one seven seven King Street.
Madam Chair, I have to leave unfortunately. Um, is that okay? You have the alternate?
Yes, Mr. Ms. Jenkins, you are now taking over for Mr. Yaski.
Okay.
So seated on this application will be Levy, Wells, Barilak, Jenkins and Albin. Levy Wells, Barilak, Jenkins and Albin. It's also the only people who are here, but hello, Mr. Ginter.
Good evening, Madam Chair and the commissioners. Uh, David Ginter from Redness and Mead here on behalf of Convent of the Sacred Heart. Um, also, I think in the, the audience tonight is Bill Kenny, uh, landscape architect, uh, for Sacred Heart. Um, I don't know if you have any questions or, or commentary for him tonight. Um, I'm, I'm going to keep this short. I, I listened to the briefing session yesterday and I know that there's a few things we need to, to work through uh, before, uh, we have further discussions, but I, I did want to uh, get on the record and open this tonight and, and seek some, some guidance from you before we, we move on and, and come back to you. Um, we did have a meeting with, uh, Juan, uh, from the engineering department on Friday, and we've come to an understanding on his comments and how to address them. Uh, we believe that we have a, a path forward, uh, addressing his commentary without changing.
On the wetlands, on the wetlands delineation?
No, wetlands delineation is, is fine. We've already been approved at wetlands. We have the permanent hand, uh, in
Okay.
terms of the drainage basin lines, I think might be what you're asking about.
Well, it's not what the staff report says. The staff report says Mr. Peters wants to look at the wetlands deline, the watershed delineation.
Uh, watershed delineation is different than wetlands. So we, yes, the watershed delineation, uh, we, we've come to an agreement on that. Uh, we have a way to address his commentary or comments without changing our plans, uh, we believe at all. Um, here comes the, the, the guidance we need from, from you is, uh, A R C, uh, as, as you saw in, in the staff report and.
Hated your landscape plan and Mr. Kenny can fix that.
Uh, we can, but the staff, uh, A R C wants us to move the rain garden.
It's okay. You leave it where, I mean, look, here's the thing with a rain garden. You eventually may want to do additional work. Okay. I would say to you, leave the rain garden where you're proposing it so that you can do the additional work. That said, I don't see that it's a huge problem to, if you're going to do a parking lot there, it's not like the rain garden is a big cost, right? You're going to have to tear that all out. You're going to have to gravel it anyway. Um, so I'm not sure it makes a huge big difference for you to, you know, fall on your swords over refusing to relocate the rain garden. But if you're planning on putting a parking area there at some point, I understand you're trying to be cost effective. I think the rest of the commission, do you guys agree? Okay. All right. So the commission sees you want to be cost effective. So the key for us is make sure DPW drainage is all right and fix your landscaping with A R C. And we're sending you to A R C, Mr. Kenny, because you've got kindred spirits with, over there. You can work with Mr. Conti and Mr. Heine. They both have degrees. They both worked on the landscape regulations. So you should be able to come up with what satisfies the new landscape regulations. The key thing that we're looking for, Mr. Kenny, in your landscaping is we swore to everybody that when we rewrote these, there would be maximum buffering between a non-residential use in a residential zone and everybody else. However, Sacred Heart's kind of in an isolated place. But it's still good for you to follow the intent of the regulations. We realize you don't have neighbors sitting right on top of you.
Understood.
And we want you to be assisting. You have a reputation, Mr. Kenny, for being very good at doing sustainable landscapes, so just go to it.
Will do.
Um, anybody else want to add to that from the commission? Mr. Levy has raised his hand. Mr. Levy?
Yes, um, I think I read that there's a twenty-foot fence.
That, that is correct. There is a, a, a ball netting, if you will, fence, uh, that's proposed more interior to the property uh, than the tennis courts. Uh, it would be, uh, to the west, uh, of the natural grass soccer field. Uh, the school has a, an issue where, you know, the girls, you know, kick soccer balls and other athletic equipment uh, goes flying, uh, into the wetland wooded area to the west there. And it would just be ball netting to, to keep the, the equipment uh, from having to be chased out of the, the wetland pocket.
Um, is, is, okay, and, uh, but this is adjacent to where the tennis courts are?
It would be north of the tennis courts. It, it has nothing to do with the tennis courts itself. It's kind of two different pieces.
Is it, is the netting actually, I, I, I'm trying to remember. I, I'm not looking at it at the moment. Was it actually next to where the tennis courts are?
No, it is to the north of it.
It's just to the north. Okay.
Correct. Yep.
Um, uh, it just seems like twenty feet is pretty excessive. Uh, I don't think you, it, uh, the, the number of balls that you're going to catch with an extra ten feet, if you had ten, ten-foot screen or even a fifteen-foot screen, you're going to catch ninety-five percent of the balls there. So I would encourage you to use a smaller net, uh, only in that, you know, you the higher up you go, the more noticeable something might be, but it is, it is netting and it's not like a, a chain link fence, right?
No, that's correct. It would be, um, not that, that's similar to what you see on, on King Street for Brunswick Schools Athletic Fields where it's, um, you know, smaller poles, uh, every twenty feet or so with, uh, the thin, uh, netting, uh, between the poles.
With, but this is twenty feet high. Is that's, that's what.
That's correct. The, the netting will be twenty feet high. Yes.
And it is very interior to the property.
Yeah, I can, I can share my screen if it helps, you know, kind of locate this for you.
Yeah, I, I, I just, you know, but you're on a, a high point there and you're going to be able to, I don't know, you know, you're, this is a hill.
Um, well, it's on the other side of the hill. The, the, the hill for, that you see from King Street is the high point. Uh, and then grade starts to drop off as you work more interior to the property and you have a twenty-some-odd acre wetland corridor uh, between King Street and the High Point and where this, this ball netting is going, uh, and you're, you know, five, six hundred feet from any property line uh, where it would be located as well.
If somebody, uh, anywhere near approaches that twenty-foot height from, uh, from where they're going to be playing, that's some hell of a, of a, a foot that person has. I, I think it's just excessive. And, uh, I, I think if you just think about that a little bit more cleverly, I just think, make it fifteen feet or twelve feet. Uh, to make it twenty feet, it means it's a much larger structure. Uh, and, uh, more, more intense and, um, uh, you, you could have noticed it from everywhere. So for playing tennis, you're doing this, you're that, you, all you see is that net. So, uh, anyway, just, just my comment.
Understood.
Okay. Mr. Wells?
Yeah, just to beat a dead horse on the net. Is it just to stop soccer balls or is it also lacrosse balls and tennis balls?
Uh, tennis has nothing to do with this. Um, this, this setting is, is probably, uh, two hundred feet away from the tennis courts. Um, and it's, it's located adjacent to the natural turf soccer field. Um, and it's primarily a soccer field. Um, but they do, uh, at times, as we talked about, you know, the pre-app that, you know, they have different sports that need to be playing down here. So there will be lacrosse down here as well. And it would also be able to help with lacrosse and, you know, whatever other sporting activity goes on on that athletic field.
Okay, so, though, yeah, uh, because I was thinking, if it was just soccer, you could have wider netting, so the birds don't get tangled in there, but that's not going to work. Okay. Thank you.
All right. So you're going to think about the netting. Any other comments from the commission, Ms. Jenkins?
Uh, yes, I know that engineering mentioned a hypothetical traffic study if there are changes in the enrollment of the programs. I'm assuming that this is just making more tennis courts available for the existing, and there are no additional programs that would be added or additional enrollment.
That's, that's correct. As, as I presented to you at the pre-app a couple of months ago, um, the school has had an influx of, uh, students wanting to participate in athletics. Uh, and, uh, this past spring, and I apologize for not exact numbers, but with six courts on campus, I think, I think they can only, um, uh, allow, you know, upwards of seventy or eighty students to play. Uh, it just doesn't enough court space with the times allowed uh, to get out there and, and adequately serve the student population. Uh, and they had a hundred and twenty-six, uh, girls, I believe somewhere in that number, uh, come out for the tennis team this past spring. And unfortunately, they had to turn, uh, some of the students away. Um, so having the nine courts, uh, allows them to, to more adequately serve their, their current population in the, in the usage there.
Thank you.
Anything else? Anybody else?
Are these all weather courts?
Hmm?
Are they all weather courts in your building?
Uh, it's, it's going to be, yeah, it's, it's a hard, a hard court system, uh, not that dissimilar from what's out there currently. Um, it's just going to be, uh, a more, uh, uh, improved system because it's going to be, uh, uh, concrete base, uh, as opposed to asphalt base. So the, the maintenance on it is, is less over the years, less susceptible to cracking and, and having to, to patch and things like that. But yeah, it would, it gets all, it is all weather. It's not, we're not talking about clay or, or grass or hard true or things like that. It is going to be a hardcore system.
Okay. And, and because you, you're concerned about maintenance is, is really the point, right?
Long-term maintenance, yes, which is why we're going with a post-tensioned concrete system in, in lieu of just replacing it in kind with an asphalt system. It, the existing courts, uh, have reached their, you know, end of their useful life. They are significantly cracked. Um, and instead of, you know, yearly having to come in and patch the cracks and, and restripe, um, the, the school is, is looking to, to improve the, the quality of the core from a maintenance standpoint.
Okay. Uh, that's interesting. I, um, this, um, I think that, uh, I, I certainly appreciate the idea of, of doing that. But long-term, having, using hard true, and it might be a little bit more expensive, uh, and the, it, it's just, uh, um, a, a better surface for the, the children. Um, and, uh, it has, uh, it saves their knees and their ankles and their joints, uh, which I think should be important. And the, uh, eventual, you know, eventually maybe these courts last fifteen years or so. Uh, you, the, the, the work that you'll have to do on a, on a, these hard surfaces is substantial. And, uh, they do deteriorate over time and, uh, they become more problematic and, um, their, their ability to function is degraded over time. So I think that, uh, there's um, you know, good schools have to kind of figure that out for themselves, but I, I do know that, uh, um, there's, there's something to be said for using uh, permeable surfaces that are much, uh, more, have more benefits for the health of the children.
Okay. Anything else, folks? Any comments from the public on this application at Sacred Heart? This is eleven seventy-seven King Street Sacred Heart for tennis courts. Please raise your virtual hand. No comments from the public. Okay. So y'all are going to go, you, you had a must return anyway to A R C and that kills both, both birds with one stone. Come back to us when you're ready. Um, Mr. Kenny, I'm sure you'll do a great job.
Thank you.
Uh, and you'll be ready to go. Thank you very much. So.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Our next application on the public hearing is, uh, number eight, as items six and seven have been postponed. It's River Road Development LLC for a final coastal site plan and special permit uh, to construct two carports, a hundred and three feet by sixteen feet long, seventeen feet long, each having the capacity to hold ten cars at eighty-nine River Road in the WB zone. Seated on this application will be Levy, Barilak, Wells, Jenkins and Albin. Hello, Mr. Hegney. Nice to see you.
Uh, I guess it's still afternoon, Madam Chair. Good afternoon.
I just say hello so, because I get confused.
Well, the sun's still shining and, uh, we're almost at the end of the meeting and maybe this will be a record. Um, uh, good evening.
Oh, he just jinxed us. I hate it when people do that. He jinxed us. No, you can't go on to Vancouver anymore. You're done. You jinxed the commission. We were doing fine.
Oh, I'll send postcards.
No, you're not going away. You're leaving us here till midnight now. Go ahead, Mr. Hegney.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, this is, uh, the, uh, rowing club that, uh, on River Road, uh, that you approved a number of years ago. It has, uh, uh, apartments and, uh, the, it was that far back, but it has finally been constructed and they're looking to have carports and that would be for twenty cars. It's over the existing asphalt, so there's no increase in impervious coverage. We have, uh, more than enough parking, although we're losing two spaces. Uh, we have seventy-six spaces, uh, which are more than adequate of what's there. Um, and, uh, the roof will be white, so it will be less of, uh, a heat source, uh, than the asphalt that is there. Uh, and, uh, we are providing planting beds at each of the pillars, both front and rear uh, for, uh, vines, which our landscape architect is, uh, working on what is appropriate there uh, so that they can, uh, grow up the, uh, pillars and also onto the roof. So, uh, and we're having, uh, additional planting in front of the, uh, wall, which will screen the, uh, vehicles from River Road. So, uh, we went to A R C. A R C, uh, was very supportive, liked it, and, uh, uh, we would ask for your approval.
Great. Any comments from the commission? Mr. Wells?
Yeah, we, uh, we spoke yesterday, uh, Mr. Hagney, if, if the client could perhaps consider putting, uh, solar panels on the carports and then, which could, uh, service, you know, a couple, uh, E V chargers underneath, if, if that was something under consideration or something he might even really consider.
Well, when we looked at that, uh, and John Halper, our architect, uh, uh, should be in the audience. The, uh, it doesn't work well on this, these, uh, uh, roofs, uh, because you can't lay them flat because then they won't be as effective. Uh, and to put them at an angle is really going to destroy the look of the building from River Road and, um, we, we, we being Mr. Halper, Mr. Winklevoss is the owner of the property, uh, and, uh, his landscape architect, uh, were, uh, thinking that that is just not a good thing to do here. John, has that summarized it pretty well? You're muted.
Muted.
There you go.
Yeah, in order to get, um, the solar panels to be efficient, we would need a, an eight pitch. And so they would be pretty dominating and, um, furthermore, I mean, the, the, the square footage of, uh, of, uh, the, the kilowatt hours that, that it generates and goes back into the grid, doesn't offset much, uh, for the building itself. So there's no way we can, at this point, directly tie it to a, a charger below. But it's certainly something to consider down the road. And maybe if technology changes and, and we can get an efficient flat, uh, panel, it'd be something to consider, but that's where we are now.
Thank you.
Um, and then regarding the planting, um, we do have a, a species that, from our landscape architect, they're thinking that it would be either a climbing hydrangea or some sort of Boston ivy. On the pergola.
Sounds nice. Uh, the addition of, of these, um, carport, so pergolas, um, is going to have a, a very nice effect on, seeing this from the, from the street and containing the, 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 the site and making it seem less like just a big open parking lot. I think it might look pretty nice.
Thank you.
Just as a lesson learned, Mr. Hegney, um, there, is there an operational reason that tenants wanted covered parking? At the residential?
Uh, John, maybe you could, uh, address the, uh, the reason why?
Oh, sure. Um, the, the building went through, uh, a couple iterations with how the apartments were going to be, um, rented or sold and originally they were proposed as rental units. And then, uh, with market conditions changing and the, uh, the fact that they were pretty pleased with how the building was looking and, and, and understanding the real estate, uh, the owner decided to create condos instead. But the condo market being different than the rental market, the condo market pretty much demanded at least covered parking. And, um, you know, there was no way on that site to ever have gotten, you know, interior parking being in the flood zone. So, um, this was the best we could do to help out that situation.
Got it. That was just for us, for our lesson learned is when we see an application like this one in the future that we would suggest, it's not zoning per se, but we now know that it works better if, uh, somebody can be offered covered parking and we could make the suggestion just because of what we've seen. Any other questions from the commission? Any comments? Um, I, I, I do have to echo that, um, I've seen a couple of buildings that have enormous carport, uh, carport facilities with, uh, solar panels on them and honestly, it was might have been energy efficient, but it was very unattractive. Okay. Any comments from the public? This is on eighty-nine River Road on application to add carports, two carports to the property to accommodate covered parking for the residences. No comments from the public. Does anybody object to closing this application at this time? This application is hereby closed. With that, we go to the next application on our public hearing. That is number nine. Thank you very much, Mr. Halper. And it's number nine, and I know, Mr. Hagney, you're staying, Miss Number Nine Berkeley Insurance Company for a final site plan and special permit. It's to renovate the existing office building, uh, replacing the rooftop mechanical equipment, installing, very importantly for the neighbors, an acoustic barrier, adding a penthouse conference room. I'm just reminding you guys what's in here. Uh, the open item that we had left after the last meeting was that the commission had asked that the applicant consider a natural gas generator instead of a diesel generator. Uh, Mr. Hagney, if you would proceed, and again, this is at four seventy-five Steamboat Road. And, oh, just to remind everybody, and I better do this now, it's Albin, uh, Barilak. So we're changing the seating. Albin, Barilak, Wells and Jenkins. Did I get everybody? One, two.
Levy.
Levy.
Levy. Thank you. And Levy. Um, Mr. Levy, uh, was not seated the previous time, um, but is taking back the application now. So it's again, Albin, Barilak, Wells, Levy. Did I get everybody this time in Jenkins? I hate doing that. All right. Okay, Mr. Hagney.
Uh, good evening, Madam Chair, uh, members of the commission. For the record, Tom Hegney on behalf of the applicant. Uh, we met with you, uh, at the last meeting and, uh, the, you know, as we explained then, uh, this is very much a, a mechanical-driven application. Uh, the building hasn't been upgraded in over twenty years. Uh, they're looking to replace the mechanical systems on it and, um, and provide the small security booth and most importantly, uh, put up an acoustic wall on the penthouse and create a indoor space for the generator. Uh, this also includes, uh, reducing the amount of, of, uh, fossil fuels used on site uh, by eliminating the chillers, which are currently run on natural gas and, uh, replacing them, uh, with electric units, uh, to provide, uh, cooling for the building. Uh, we had a lot of discussion on this, uh, generator. It's a very large generator needed to run the entire building. And, uh, the recommendation to, uh, the owners of the building from the mechanical engineers have been to have this run on diesel. And, uh, we did investigate, uh, whether it could, uh, run on natural gas. Uh, the, the main stumbling block there, besides the fact that it would take another year to get the gas generator, uh, is that it had, needs four feet more of headroom than the diesel generator. And we're already digging down three feet to put the diesel generator room in. And the concern that the engineers have expressed is that this going down farther undermines the foundation of the building itself, which is something obviously we, we don't want to do. So we are coming back to you. Uh, we submitted a, a letter from our mechanical engineer on a number of other issues. But i- if those could be resolved or dealt with, uh, we still have the issue of the structure of the building. Clearly, we are not going to put this generator outside after having spent a lot of time working with the neighbors on, uh, on dealing with noise. Uh, they, they've had many issues, uh, over the years with the noise. Uh, this plan is, is designed to address that issue. I would add that the generator needs to run half an hour once a month. And since a super storm, storm Sandy, that's all it has done. The existing generator is half an hour once a month for the last twelve years, eleven years. And it ran three days when, uh, uh, Sandy hit. So, uh, overall, the building is going to be much more energy and fuel efficient, particularly fossil fuels than it is right now. Uh, and, uh, I would, the last thing I would add is the, the, uh, generator as designed, uh, is, uh, it does meet the building code. So, uh, could there be something better? There's can always be something better. But here we meet the building code. Uh, we're addressing the noise issue for the neighbors. We're upgrading the entire mechanical system in the building. And we would ask for your support and approval.
Questions in com- uh, Mr. Levy?
Yes, thank you. Mr. Hagney, uh, is there any requirement for how much of the building or what, uh, what, what needs to be, um, part of, uh, of, of this emergency unit, like, like elevators or whatever? So can you just tell us a little bit about?
That this generator is designed to have this building fully functional and usable, uh, during an emergency. And, uh, we, we had a discussion, uh, with the Berkley's last week at the property. Uh, they feel very strongly that they need to be able to respond to their customers and provide payments on policies when there's an emergency like this. Now, the, the Berkley's are longtime, uh, members of the community. Uh, they are, uh, very supportive, uh, corporate partners within Greenwich. They have many customers in Greenwich and they want to make sure that they can provide the service. Uh, but whether, when, when, when really needed. And so th- this, the short answer is this generator will run the whole building.
And i- in, in that event, uh, what concerns do you have about actually accessing the building, you know, if there's flooding and so and so? Do you?
So, uh, Steamboat Road and Museum Drive, the intersection there is not in a flood zone. And there, far the south on Steamboat Road, it is, the Island Beach Parking Lot is in a flood zone. But Steamboat Road is elevated in that location. And therefore, uh, there is direct access to the site, uh, without, uh, the concern of, of it flooding.
Okay. Well, thank you.
Any more questions from the commission, Mr. Wells?
Yeah, uh, uh, thank you, Mr. Hagney. And also, I, I really appreciate the thorough response that your engineers provided, uh, regarding, you know, the, uh, pros, if you will, for a diesel generator. But I would like to drill down more on the diesel generator. And I asked a question at the last meeting and that was what EPA tier love emission level are you planning to provide, uh, for that generator?
I did ask the engineers that, that question and they said it was tier two.
Okay. Well, tier two is well below the final requirements, uh, which is EPA tier four final. Tier, tier four final reduces particulate matters and uh, nitrogen oxide by ninety percent. So that's, that's our standard in this town for diesel generators. So I would, I would recommend you look into that. Now, you know, we're not stopping you from getting a, a diesel generator, but if there's gonna be a large diesel generator in this town, we have to have sufficient pollution control devices, which is, uh, what we have. And the, this standard came in two thousand and fifteen, so it's not a new one. Now, uh, for a standby generator, people could say, okay, well, the EPA says, uh, tier two or three is okay, but they also grant municipalities the right, the right to have a higher standard. In fact, in California, standby diesel generators, they're all required to have tier four final. And that was the standard we were applied, applied for another very large generator. In fact, twice as large as your generator. So I would strongly encourage you to, uh, consider that. It's still a diesel generator, but it doesn't pollute anywhere near as much as a tier two generator, which I think was approved in, in two thousand and eight. So it's, you know, like fifteen years old. Let's get the, let's get the best and latest equipment in there if we, if we have to do diesel.
Uh, Mr. Wells, if I could ask our, uh, mechanical engineer, Nick Meduno, uh, to join us, um, he's, he's best to respond to your comment.
Thank you.
He should be in attendance, uh, if, and may have raised his hand already.
He's on his way in.
Thank you.
The commission is the model of efficiency, Mr. Hagney.
I can see that, Madam Chair.
Good afternoon, everyone.
Hello, Mr. Meduno. Um, Mr. Wells, if you would go ahead.
Yeah, I, I was wondering what the possibility was to improve diesel emission controls on the diesel generator that you're proposing for this town and to step it up from tier level two to tier level four final. As I said before, we had another application in town, uh, a, a generator twice as large as yours. And that was the level that they, uh, agreed to, uh, install. And, uh, I mean, I'll, I'll, I'll add, it doesn't have to be certified. It could be compliant. We wouldn't hold up, uh, the construction. We'd just say, when it's assembled, uh, get a Connecticut deep certified organization to run the test and basically, you know, give us the test results in a document saying, hey, it's, it's tier four final compliant. That's all we're looking for.
Understood it. And I heard your previous comments about the, the California, uh, up-to-date standards, and we actually do a lot of work out in California ourselves. So there's two things. One is this generator is an emergency generator. Right then and there, the way this system's designed is this backs up, as Mr. Levy, uh, requested before, it backs up not only, uh, electronic doors, um, lighting, egress pathways. Um, so that's, that's, that's the first purpose. The second purpose is obviously, um, to back up the building. As an emergency generator, tier two is, is the code requirement due to the fact that it's not, it's not a power production engine, right? This, as Mr. Hegney, uh, responded before, the anticipated usage of this generator is a maximum of six hours a year just to maintain the engine itself. The, the tier four kind of designs are, are only utilized in, in more of a standby application where they're actually, uh, clients or business owners are exercising these generators on a weekly, if not daily basis to, uh, produce power and, and most of the time to, to beat the utility costs, um, curves when, when the power companies produce those. So in our application, um, that, that, the reason why it's tier two is because it's an emergency, um, standby generator. And to, to accommodate a tier four system, the headroom, as Mr. Hagney described before, for a natural gas, the, the after-treatment device on a generator of this size for tier four is, is approximately the size of a fifty-five gallon drum. Which would, which would then trigger the additional structural excavation, which puts us back into a, uh, a situation that is not achievable because of the building's foundation depth. So, so, Mr. Wells, that's crucial. We did look into it. Um, unfortunately, the, the, the constraint of the size of the tier four treatment is just not achievable.
So is the pollution control device, they go on top of the generator? Is that how it works?
Yes, there's two steps. The engine itself is also, um, manufactured in, in a different way to, to try to capture some of that pollution within the combustion process. But the main captured sources is a barrel. We call it an after-treatment device, tier four after-treatment, um, system. It's basically an oversized muffler, um, that captures a lot of the pollutants that sits directly on top of the generator.
And, and how tall is it? And, and I know, I know the difference is four feet for natural gas. How much, how much taller is the, uh, you know, the barrel?
Give me one about ten seconds, I should, could tell you. The barrel itself is about thirty-six inches for this system. Um, obviously engineering goes into how it connects and stuff like that. So you want to give it time.
Okay. That's all I have.
Any comments from the rest of the commission? No.
Um, I, I think we're, we were still looking, I think A, A R C was still looking for a three-dimensional east perspective on this property.
Yes, they were.
Mr. Hagney? I think it was Mr. Stillman who actually asked for, for the east elevation, which we did provide to him. I, our, our neighbor to the east.
I believe A R C must have also asked for it because it was in some, something that we received. Yeah, Tracy's nodding. We, it's in our staff reporter in them, uh, somewhere. I remember seeing it as well.
I have it under A R C as well. Um, we've received it, Mr. Hagney?
We, we, uh, we generated a east elevation. Uh, we did not see that there was the need to have something more than that. Uh, we, I frankly, I thought it was really just to address Mr. Stillman's, uh, comments when we were at the A R C meeting.
I believe, well, um, oh, I see an air, and, but it, you sent it to Mr. Stillman and not to A R C. So why don't we just ask you to put it in the record?
We, we did submit it to the commission as part of this application, but, uh, um, but I, I'll make sure that it's part of the record.
Okay. Uh, anything else, Ms. Jenkins?
I have nothing else, Madam Chair.
Anybody else?
Not for me.
Anybody from the public wish to speak on this application? Huh, your neighbors are happy with what you're doing. All right. This is the application at 475 Steamboat, Berkeley Insurance Company, going once. Anybody from the public, just raise your virtual hand? No. Okay, so, um,
We have worked very hard, Madam Chair, to address their concerns.
Mr. Hagney, I wanted to thank you for that. Because the depth of ongoing concern and the length of time, I am so glad that it has finally been addressed, that the neighbor issues with the noise have finally, are being addressed and being addressed so satisfactorily. So please convey our thanks to your client for responding to the neighbors and to improving their quality of life. Uh, I'm glad that the neighbors were able to start that dialogue. Uh, with that, uh, does anybody object to closing this application at this time? Seeing no objection, this application is hereby closed. Okay, folks, I think we can keep going, right?
Thank you, Madam Chair.
All right. Goodbye, Mr. Hagney. Have a nice trip. Um, we can keep going with, with, you, you guys don't, are, don't need a break, right? 6:30. This is probably going to take a while on the, our first pass at the regs. But, okay, so Town of Greenwich Planning and Zoning Department, uh, for a zoning text amendment, uh, for the lighting and signage regulations. Um, Mr. Leroy is going to speak briefly about the work. The commission is then going to ask questions. Members of the public who wish to comment on the applications kindly raise your, on the application kindly raise your virtual hands. And please, I think we still have a lot of people here, so I'm thinking that we're going to have a lot of comment. Kindly, uh, keep your comments to two minutes, uh, so that it doesn't get long. This is not going to be the only time you have an opportunity to comment. This is our first pass at hearing from you, running these by folks, and we'll keep doing outreach and hearing from people. And, um, Mr. Leroy, if you would introduce this.
Sure, thank you. Uh, our consultants, uh, from B F J are, are also going to be joining us. Uh, I don't, I think I gave them a little bit too much time to come in before the, uh, the last item was addressed, that we were going to talk a little longer. But, um, I'll have them join and then they'll talk about the nuts and bolts, but I do want to talk about the process. Uh, first and foremost, as Madam Chair mentioned, this is not going to be the only meeting we're going to talk about this. This was intended to be the opening, uh, remarks for the change that we have been putting together for, uh, looking back here, our first public workshop was, uh, in February of 2022. Uh, we've had eight of them. Uh, so this is not something that has been done in, um, in a, in an office or internally or with a consultant without, um, public vetting. Uh, we've had meetings and I know others have been involved and, and witnessed it. But I just wanted to let everybody know that this is, again, the beginning of the conversation and not the final end. Uh, the main goals, and, and Susan will get into the nitty gritty about it, was to, one, codify the process for signage and lighting in town, uh, particularly as it relates to reviews that the A R C gives comments to the commission and to, uh, make other decisions on, um, to, uh, update our regulations. There are, uh, just outdated language and concepts that are, uh, quite frankly, not legal anymore, or they don't reflect current technologies and, and other methods that we, uh, have typically used. And, uh, three was to, uh, create some sort of, not a regulation on aesthetics, but some sort of guidebook as to what kind of things we consistently, as, as the town have asked for when it relates to signage and regulations, uh, excuse me, lighting. This is regulations. Um, and, uh, what, what, just setting some reasonable expectations about what we are, what the town is looking for. Uh, and then fourth is, um, lighting. And, uh, we, we, we understand not only how we, you know, we went from halogen and other, uh, light sources to now LEDs, but also, uh, what type of lighting, how that shield, uh, shielded and how that affects the environment. It's been something that has been, uh, asked for, for a number of years. And, uh, we took the opportunity with the consultant's expertise on lighting to hopefully create a regulation that, uh, does both. But I understand there's going to be comments from people concerned about other lighting fixtures and features. Um, so we're, we're, we're all ears. Uh, we want to, we want to make this the work. And I think this does a lot, uh, to correct, um, quite frankly, the complaints we get about effective signage and effective processes and, uh, the results of that. So, um, if Susan and Jonathan are in the room, I'm looking back here, uh, I'd let them join and they can go through and walk us through the language here.
Let me see. No, Favate's not in here. BFJ, right? Let me just make sure.
Yeah. Tracy, did you have their number or?
Um, I don't, I don't think I have it. I don't think I ever got it. Um,
She told me she was logging on at six, um, a few minutes ago.
Hmm.
So she just got home a few minutes ago.
Is she practiced under a different name? Maybe Leo Smith, is it?
No, Leo Smith, Leo Smith is with the Dark Skies Initiative. Uh, we could let Mr. Smith speak. And unless the commission wants to ask questions about, I think we really just want to hear from the public tonight and hear from Susan Favate. We could let Mr. Smith speak. I know that he wants to discuss, uh, the Dark Skies Initiative.
Uh, sure. It, uh, in the spirit of efficiency, let's keep talking.
Alrighty.
Yeah, just touched on it again.
All right, so, uh, Mr. Smith. And then folks, um, eventually, um, I don't know what happened to Susan, but eventually she'll show. Uh, but if you guys want to comment on the regulations now because you've been reading them, go ahead and raise your virtual hands and we'll call on you. The commission's been reading them. So we don't have as much to say at this point. We want to hear from you. Mr. Smith, if you would go ahead, it looks like you're unmuted.
Okay, tha- thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, there are three proposed changes to the, uh, submitted lighting regulations. Uh, the first one has to do with color temperature. That's under section six dash 151 dash three for general requirements. It eliminates the last sentence that says for commercial zones, lighting shall not exceed 4,000 K without A R C approval. Uh, my suggestion is that you eliminate that in its entirety. The lighting levels are another, another issue, but the color temperature is extremely important for environmental and health reasons. In 2016, the American Medical Association approved a new amendment to its policies. They're suggested that as far as the color temperature is concerned, that it encourages no more than 3,000 K for all outdoor lighting applications. So that was the first, um, suggested amendment. The second one deals with, um, section six dash 151.3 general requirements. And under that section, subsection four, it talks about the basis value or the value of the lights being, uh, ha- at half life or end of life. And my suggestion would be that instead of putting an end of life, you simply say that the basis value or the majority of the luminaires, um, has been fully depreciated according to IRS depreciation schedules. And the reason for that is that this is very clear and easy to understand versus end of life is very ambiguous and can be argued many different ways. Um, the next section for proposed amendment has to do with outdoor sports illumination. The first part, there were two there. The first one is to lower the color temperature where it currently says 4,000 K down to 3,000 K. And please note that, uh, high pressure sodium lights that were used at sports facilities back in the eighties and nineties all used 2,200 K. So 3,000 K should not be a problem. And I suggested adding a fourth subsection. Right now, sports lighting does not deal with illumination levels. And the Model Outdoor Lighting Ordinance that was approved by the Illuminating Engineering Society and by the Dark Sky, uh, suggested that we follow four different classes of play where all classes of play are sufficiently illuminated for those on the playing field under class four. The only time you need anything more than class four is when you have audiences and you have your, your spectators that are distant from the, from the playing field and they need more light to be able to see the action on the field. And what this does is it says basically that if you have 500 seats or less, class four is the class for lighting. When you get to the point that you have a big stadium and whatnot, then yes, you need more, uh, higher levels of light. But if you were to adopt the Model Lighting Ordinance Task Force Recommended Practices for the class one, class two, class three, class four lighting levels, that would be a great step forward. Thank you.
Um, Mr. Smith, uh, you, you are with an NGO that works on dark skies?
Would you say that again, please?
I was just trying to find out what your background was in this.
Um, I, I, it's pretty, it's, it's involved with, with legislation here in Connecticut. I was a member of the Outdoor Lighting, uh, Task Force that adopted these model lighting ordinances. I was a voting member. 15 years I've been a voting member of the roadway lighting committee. That's a Illuminating Engineering Society Task Force to deal with issues on roadway lighting. Um, I'm the Northeast Regional Director for the International Dark Sky Association. So my background in outdoor lighting is, is substantial.
Okay, does the commission have any questions for Mr. Smith? No, okay. Um, thank you very much, Mr. Smith. Our next speaker is Myra Klockenbrink. I'm gonna, oh. Ms. Klockenbrink, if you would unmute.
Uh, good, good evening, members. Um, I, uh, my name is Myra Klockenbrink. I am with the Greenwich Sustainability Committee, their land water sector chair. And I, I wanted to, um, uh, talk to you about the initiative that we started with a number of organizations, including, uh, with the help of Mr. Leo Smith and Mario Moda, um, the cardiologist who, uh, worked with the American Medical Association to, um, establish standards of, um, uh, light, um, exposure, um, in, in the, in the prevention of, um, breast cancer, prostate cancer, and, um, uh, sleep disruption. And I, I, I wanted to, um, talk about how, uh, light pollution is actually the one kind of pollution with, that is within our power to stop. Um, and I think we just need to be coordinated about it and educate the public. But it, it is documented, um, that, uh, light at night, um, weakens the immune system and, uh, disrupts sleep, uh, interferes, uh, with our, um, uh, natural hormonal levels. It is all, that is in terms of human health and, and in terms of our wildlife, um, darkness is a habitat. Um, a lot of reproduction happens at night, um, especially among our insect populations. And it's necessary for their, um, flourishing. And, um, so when we think about, um, you know, light pollution, we think about our, our annoying neighbor with the floodlight in their garage. But it actually has a broader, deeper effect on the entire ecosystem. And I think one other thing that we, uh, need to remember is that there is a magnificent reminder of our place in the universe, um, in the night sky. And, uh, our children are growing up without that reference. And we should be able to view it, um, out here in Greenwich, I would think that is possible. And needless to say, all this, uh, burning of lights, um, uh, creates CO2 emissions and we, and waste energy, costs money. So this is a smart, um, uh, that's a smart revamp of the lighting regulations. And I, I think that we really need to communicate to the public to turn off their lights and have good practices, um, for lighting their homes and our businesses. And I appreciate your time tonight.
Thank you very much, Ms. Klockenbrink. Okay, we are now ready for Susan Favate. Ma'am, if you would unmute and start your camera.
Hi. Hi.
So Ms. Favate, as the commission knows, is, um, with a consulting firm that developed or helped us develop the regulations. Uh, as Patrick mentioned earlier, uh, both on signage as well as on lighting, there've just been so many changes and so much technology and so many court cases that we felt we needed expertise on board, uh, which we don't normally do, as you know. We wrote our P O C D ourselves and we write our regulations ourselves. Uh, go ahead, Susan.
Thank you, Chair. Um, I will be brief and I'm sure there are others who might want to speak. And I know you've had a long meeting already. Um, just wanted to give a quick overview of, of the lighting and signage regulations uh, in the context of what our charge was, uh, as your consultants. Um, I think it's been mentioned already that, um, there are obviously a lot of technical changes and legal changes that have occurred over the past few years. Um, our charge was also to just look overall at the, both the lighting and the signage regulations in terms of opportunities to clarify, streamline, um, promote better organization. So that was really kind of the first piece. Um, and then on the legal side, we were looking at, um, the extent to which the regulations complied or didn't with recent, um, Supreme Court cases, particularly, um, one recent one, uh, Gilbert, um, the Gilbert case, which really, uh, really kind of changed sign regulation across the country and, and ruled that, uh, content could no longer be, uh, be regulated. So that really prompted many municipalities across the nation to take another look at their signage regulations. We're also looking at, um, your compliance with the Connecticut general statutes, and I'll speak about that, uh, in a moment. Um, and then the last piece, um, was policy based. So, um, you know, looking at your P O C D and your other planning documents to make sure that the lighting and signage complied with those and that they really furthered, um, the, the recommendations, particularly of the P O, P O C D, which spoke to, um, you know, supporting Greenwich's character um, across the town, but also looking specifically at, you know, village areas and the specific character in those, um, portions of the town. Uh, and also the specific recommendation on dark sky, um, as pertains to lighting. So, um, on the organization side, a lot of what we did really was just initially moving around text, making it more clear, kind of starting out at the beginning of the, the signage regulations with regulations that with regulations that pertain to all zones and across the board, and then getting more specific into commercial zones versus residential zones, trying to take a really light touch on residential zones in terms of signage. I think we made an early decision with the working group to kind of focus on the commercial zones. So on the administrative and organizational side, we added a number of definitions for specific sign types to, you know, to really clarify those types of signage, where they're allowed and where they're not, and to make clear in the applicant's view as well, what those signage types are. We also noticed that even though the A R C, the Architectural Review Committee, is very involved in signage and lighting, there was actually very little, almost nothing in your regulation about their authority, their jurisdiction. And so we added that section, recommending adding that section to your administrative provisions, really taking, you know, from the resolution, the P and Z resolution that established the A R C and moving that into your regulation. And then lastly, looking at opportunities for better enforcement and picking up on where you already have provisions for enforcement in terms of your zoning enforcement and making clear that signage and lighting is part of that as well. So that's kind of the administrative side. And then organizationally, as I said, there was a lot of moving around text without even changing the actual content of the signage. But when we started looking at the actual content on the legal side, obviously, we wanted to make sure that we were complying with the Supreme Court decision on regulating content. So anything that got into that, and we did have a legal advisor on our team, Dwight Merrim, who's a very well-respected Laney's attorney in Connecticut, really giving his opinion on content regulation. Luckily, you were not too far along in that regard. There wasn't much to change. But on the Connecticut general statutes, what we found when we kind of dug in is that there was a lot of language in Greenwich's regulations about, you know, having to remove signage that was non-conforming, abandonment of signage, you know, really, really trying to give the town authority to remove signs that either don't conform or regulations change and they no longer conform. And really making sure that, you know, around-town signage can gradually start to comply. Unfortunately, the Connecticut general statutes really don't give municipalities that authority. You're very limited in what you can do on the non-conformity side. So we did recommend removing some text, which is clearly not compliant with the Connecticut general statutes and otherwise also making references to the CGS so that if and when Connecticut does grant municipalities that authority, your regulations will kind of, you know, tag along with that and give Greenwich that authority.
No, just a quick question for you. I just want to emphasize something you're saying. For some reason, there was a message that went out to the public, and I don't know if it was from an article in the press or what, that we would be eliminating non-conforming signage. In fact, what you've done is you have rewritten our language so we are unable to eliminate a sign that is legally non-conforming.
That's correct. And any reference to removing those signs that are non-conforming, you know, really references this CGS, the Connecticut general statutes. So to the extent that CGS doesn't allow that, therefore, it's not allowed in Greenwich either. If ultimately CGS has changed, then you would have that authority. But currently, the town does not have the ability to force removal of non-conforming signs. It's very, very, very difficult.
Again, the reaction from some of the emails that we got, you're talking about signage right now, but on lighting. If somebody had a lighting installation that was no longer consistent with the regulations, the ability to keep a non-conformity would also remain, is that correct?
That's correct, yeah. It's a pre-existing non-conformity.
So nobody, we got an email from someone in the public, and I hope they're listening now. The person was concerned about who was going to pay for the forced removal of their lighting installations. And the answer is, no, if you have something and we change the regulation, you can continue. And I just wanted to make sure that people knew that. Then the question is, to what extent folks want to buy in to a Future with Dark Skies initiative? That's another discussion. But we aren't going to be going around making people tear out installations. So I just want everybody to know that. Go ahead, Ms. Favate, my apologies.
Yeah, that's correct, Chair. Just as the case with all of zoning regulations, if you are existing already before the regulation has changed, you are legally non-conforming. So that's sort of the legal side. On the policy side, in terms of substantive changes to the signage regulations, there actually were not that many. I would say one of the biggest changes that we are recommending is because of the limited ability of the town to remove non-conforming signs, to kind of force changes with these new zoning regulations, it does somewhat limit your ability to kind of, you know, enforce a look over time. And so one of the ways that we are suggesting that the town could address that issue is design guidelines. So this is really, you know, they're not binding, they're not regulating content because they're only guidelines. But they are pretty extensive and they are meant to really give good guidance to applicants so that when they come to you, they get it right the first time. They're coming with a sign package that is really in keeping with what the town would like to see. It hopefully will reduce the time that applicants do spend with the A R C and the P and Z so that it's really more of a collaborative process. So you'll see in the regulations, they're fairly extensive, both narrative, and they're not meant to be onerous either, but they're meant to really provide, you know, solid guidance to the applicants. There's a narrative piece, and then there's also a graphic piece which shows, you know, positive examples. We wanted to keep it positive and not show the negatives, but, you know, really local positive examples around Greenwich that are what, you know, what we think and what we've understood from the working group, what the town would like to continue to see over time. And so that's, I think, a really important change in the signage regulations is that design guidelines piece that hopefully will start to create some changes over time on a voluntary basis as applicants come in and they're really trying to meet those design guidelines. On the lighting piece, that is a more significant change in the sense that it's a whole new section. If you looked at your existing lighting regulations, they are very sparse, very short. And we wanted to make sure that it's addressing both the policy goal of dark sky regulations that's expressed in the P O C D as well as recent technical changes. So one of the interesting changes here is beyond the traditional foot candle, light spillage regulation that I think you all are familiar with from your site plans, we are also looking at how to better capture glare and thinking about how glare occurs more with, you know, new technologies such as LED and really trying to capture the impact of somebody, you know, standing off a property and having the light shine in their eyes that may not technically be spilling at the ground, which is what foot candle tends to regulate. But it is, you know, clearly impacting people who are, you know, around that property or pedestrians or even drivers. So the BUG rating, it's B U G. And of course, I don't remember the acronym. But our technical self-consultant, Stan Tech, was very, you know, very tuned to that. And they've put together a pretty technical piece of the lighting regulations. It's again, not meant to be onerous and it's primarily governing commercial lights with the idea that any, you know, any commercial lighting person would be familiar with this type of system. And it's not something that is unheard of. And our understanding is that more and more communities are using the BUG rating system in combination with the foot candle system. So it's really looking at that as well as establishing different types of lighting regulation by zone and looking at, you know, regulating obviously heavier intensive commercial zones differently than some of your more neighborhood or village, potential village district zones and certainly different than residential zone, excuse me. So that's a fairly big piece on the lighting side.
And again, just to clarify, no, no, don't pause yet. Yeah. On the lighting side, when you talk about commercial zones versus residential, just because of the emails that we've gotten, could you clarify what you meant by that? Are you thinking then that in residential zones, and I don't mean to lead the witness, but in a residential zone, lighting should be more subdued and less intrusive? Whereas in a commercial zone, can you just talk about what, how the working group saw that?
Sure, yeah. You know, it's really looking at, and when we say zone, we mean by zoning district, you know, traditional building zoning district. So that was how the lighting zones were designated. And so it's really regulating the amount of light that you can have in those zones. And it's exactly to your point, Chair. In a residential zone, obviously, I think you want more, you know, a more low-key subdued type of level of lighting. Whereas on, you know, for example, Route One, I think there's a recognition that commercial businesses on, you know, corridors like that tend to need more lighting, they're more heavily tracked trafficked, they are different types of uses that tend to have more lighting and need more lighting. So there's a recognition of that, that those zones would be allowed a higher level of light measurement.
Okay.
Okay. And I would be happy to answer more specific questions if there are any. I see Mr. Levy.
Mr. Levy has his hand up.
Yes, thank you. I just wanted, if you could comment on the idea of having regulating the lighting by saying, you know, at a certain time, only a certain percentage of light can be on. So if you have outdoor lighting, you can, you know, it should be off by 12:00 AM kind of thing. And, you know, and some kind of minimal idea that, you know, if it's commercial, maybe that your sign stays on. Any, anything comes on, but nothing comes out of the stores. Something, some way of actually doing something that makes sense. You don't need lights on 20, you know, all throughout the entire night. What kind of thought did you give into that? It's also in residential, you know, everybody, so many people have lights on timers. Have you given any thought about, you know, after a certain time, those certain lights should not be, outdoor lights should be turned off and in homage to this, the night skies.
Right, right. There is a section on lighting control requirements that requires, and again, it's primarily focused on commercial properties that there is a, you know, a control of the light in terms of when it's shut off. It says, "All exterior lighting shall automatically reduce the total lumen output by at least 30% or be turned off completely either one hour after the site is closed or after 10:00 PM." And then it gets into interior lighting, you know, really regulating that as well after certain time periods that there, that's not applicable to residential properties. I think there was a concern about enforcement, you know, of those types of properties just given the sheer volume of them. But it is really focused on those commercial properties.
So if there's, night skies is something that is part of a part of a policy idea also. It's not just regulation. So if this is something which is appreciated and communicated generally, then people are more apt to be considerate of it. And it's not like you need to put everything in a regulation. But the regulation can refer to the idea of a policy outlook about these things.
Right.
So that there is some coordination between policy and regulation. So maybe something might be voluntary. But giving a kind of a, an idea, perspective that, you know, you don't need outdoor lights on past 12:00, kind of, which seems kind of obvious. And in a commercial zone, you don't necessarily need the streetlights on all night long. You don't need to light up the parking lot all night long, kind of thing. And if there is, you could have other kinds of lighting which could serve as security lighting, which simply is not as intense.
Absolutely.
Now, just Peter Levy, we just have to be very careful with that. I mean, yes. Because, for example, when we did Western Middle, Chief Hebe wrote me back during the meeting and said, "I want the lights on all night outside because people cross around and they're walking in that neighborhood, so we need to keep it lit for safety." At the same time, I can tell you that the town did a huge study that if we got schools to turn the indoor lights off at night, we would save a ton of money. So forget light spillage or intrusion. We also know we were throwing money away because the schools don't have timers. Ms. Jenkins?
Yes, Madam Chair, you just made one of the points I was going to make.
Sorry, I should have just kept my mouth shut, my apologies.
You're reading my mind again. I think in terms of roadways and commercial areas, it would be really helpful to have input from the police in terms of how little can we get away with without creating a safety issue?
I agree with that because I think that the discussion needs to go on with them and they need to understand what a, this idea of the importance of creating a policy which everybody can buy into.
And I think to the extent that there's a safety issue involved, they're going to have people agree with it more readily if they feel that the police are basically advising us as to what the best practice is. And then, you know, again, the question of enforcement. I guess from the residential point of view, I would love it if, from a policy point of view, there was a Ten Commandments for people. Since we can't tell every resident what to do, can we tell them? Can we push some of the Big Sky points in terms of wildlife? And just much less getting away, getting along with your neighbors. But just giving people the same kind of guidance with respect to residential lighting that people may simply not be aware of.
Yeah.
And that would be helpful. And again, we can't enforce it, but we can inform the public.
And I think that's definitely something you could do, you know, apart from these regulations on an educational front and even consider incentives that are sort of apart from regulations.
And the Sustainability Committee, I think, has an initiative to do that, Mary. So we could ask again, Myra was here. I don't see her now, but Janet Stone-McGiggin was here for a while and she's the co-chair of it. Anybody else, or can we ask the public if they have more comments? Members of the public, raise your virtual hands, tell us where you have comments. One of the questions I wanted to ask was, I got an email from somebody today saying that they had trouble with some of the language. They found it hard to follow. And that we would like to fix because we don't want to write in bureaucratesees. And I know it's really hard for bureaucrats not to write that way. No offense, Susan. Sometimes I see what I write and I'm like, oh my God, who wrote that? Okay, so does anybody want to give us more comments? Andreas, I know you had some comments, I see you're here. Alyssa, do you wish to speak? Oh, you know, the problem is I can see your names and I'm like, raise your hands, talk to us, folks. All right, nobody's talking to us. I'm wondering if you want to have an in-person meeting. We're happy to do that. They'll let us use Town Hall as long as we don't have. We often get more people now than Town Hall can accommodate. We're happy to have an in-person meeting with the business owners, with any group that wants to talk to us about these. And if you want to tell us where the language is hard to follow, do tell. But I promise we are not making you tear things out. We're just trying to be more legal. There's just, oh, there's Peter Alexander, okay. Somebody, come on, the rest of you. I got all these emails and now nobody wants to talk. Peter Alexander, you can only talk if you read the whole thing. All right, he's declining. He raised his hand, okay, we'll go it the other way. Mr. Alexander, go ahead.
I will try.
All right, go ahead.
Am I there?
Yes, you're here.
Oh, great. Yeah, I just, I'm pretty excited about sustainability stuff. I was, everything was energy, energy, energy when I was in the architecture, landscape architecture school because we're going to run out of all our resources by 1980. That was 70, I graduated in 77. And I really think some of this stuff's very exciting. I do want to, is in addition to the light concept, the cold air drainage, which we are blessed with our ability to clean our air. I mean, the natives figured that out. The only thing they had was wood all winter, you know. And the other thing the other, other thing is, um, get the birds and the bees to go up the corridors. So we can combine lighting with cold air drainage and the least concept of accommodating a certain set of native plants to encourage the birds and the bees to come back because remember, no bees, no booze. I think this is an exciting time for Greenwich and, uh,
A lot of others think, yeah. All right.
I just wanted to make it popular. Okay.
Thank you very much, Mr. Alexander. Anybody else want to comment? Okay, well, I know there's people who have lots of comments.
Madam Chair, if I, if I may, I know that, um, there were several comments about landscape lighting, that there were some concerns raised. And that is something that the working group talked about a lot. Um, and, and I think, you know, maybe we need to better define what's meant by landscape lighting, but my understanding is that it was really just the idea of kind of lighting a tree was something that, um, the working group really didn't want to be encouraging in terms of dark, dark sky. It's one thing to light a sign, light a pathway for safety purposes, even, uh, potentially some buildings, but if you're essentially just uplighting a tree, um, I think the, the group felt that that was, you know, not something that the town maybe should encourage. Um, I know that there were some people who, you know, had some concerns about that, and I think we'd be open to talking about, you know, some kind of compromise if, if folks want to share their concerns on that. Or better, you know, better define landscape lighting specifically to be where you're just essentially lighting up a, a, a plant.
Yeah, and Susan, I'll just add that uplighting was already a prohibitive activity with, with the current regs. So it's, it's not a new prohibition, but I, I do appreciate the people who reached out and was concerned about the clarity and, and, and that's, you know, it's, it's good to have other eyes on it because, you know, when you read it too many times, it sort of all becomes, you know, one, one shade. So.
Yeah.
So, uh, if the landscape lighting is outdoor lighting, so do we need to call it landscape lighting or just really outdoor lighting?
Well, outdoor lighting includes paths and you do want to light paths. That's the differentiation that Susan was making.
Use, you know, uh, motion sensors, sensors and things of that sort.
You know, um, a lot of times.
Lighting is, is an issue as far as I can.
A lot of, a lot of people now are using low wattage, um, uh, solar lights on their paths and they're not motion sensor, but they're sustainable. And it's just on your walking path and it's just enough to illuminate. They're very low. Um, and it's just as, you know, you have company and they come and they walk from your front door to their car. So that would be fine. It's sustainable. It's low. It's not intrusive and that's outdoor lighting. What, what apparently, and, and I missed some of these discussions, okay, but the ARC Working Group, which is mostly what this was, and some of the commission. The bigger concern is that when you light trees, you do a couple of things. You, the, you disturb the, the natural habitat, birds and all of that. Um, and the other thing is it's spillage. So my neighbors who light trees, yeah, I see it, um, you know, at night. Um, so I, I get the point. So I think if we distinguish the lighting of plantings, maybe we could do it like that. Let me look at the wording again, and, and I know there's a couple of excellent wordsmiths on the commission where we could make a better distinction what we're talking about. And I, I'm getting from the comments, from the emails we got, that people want us to be very clear that it's fine to advertise your business, that we, you know, that we want our commercial districts to be alive and thriving. Uh, so we're trying to, and I, the other thing is uh, we've historically asked people to remove political signage from private property. That is not really kosher. Uh, you could, I believe by law, if I wanted to vote for, you know, Justin Trudeau to take over the United States, I could have that sign on my front lawn, I believe, right, Patrick?
Uh, that, that is a freedom of speech. That's a First Amendment issue.
Freedom of speech. And so what's important about what we're doing now is we're making sure we don't infringe people's freedom of speech, which is why it surprised me that people were angry at us because it's like we're trying to do the opposite. We're trying to give people the, but we may have made mistakes somewhere, so happy to explore that. Okay, I keep looking at the people and they're not raising their hands. So folks that aren't raising their hands, please, uh, okay. There you go. P. Adams, I don't, I'm not sure who this is. All right. Patricia, maybe? All right. Okay, if you would unmute and go ahead. Oh, and Leo Smith, I'm sorry, I missed you. You had your hand up. I'll, um, P. Adams, if you would, go ahead.
Hi, thank you. Um, yes, I would like to echo the comments that you heard about making the language a little bit easier to understand and interpret. I think I got to about page seven before I gave up. So any additional clarity, you know, for?
Can you, your question, can you, what, in what regard are you looking for the clarity in Susan?
I just didn't have specific, it just felt very much legal ease and was difficult to follow because of that. Um, the other thing was that, um, you know, recently we saw out in California where Twitter rebranded and put a big X on the side of their building. And that is something that I would like to see not happen in town. Um, you know, maybe businesses, I don't know if this was covered in the documentation because like I said, I didn't get beyond page seven. Um, but that's something that would be an issue of concern for me if we were broadcasting signage via light on the side of office buildings and other buildings. That was my comment.
Okay, I, I would go and talk to him myself. Apparently he's obsessed with Xs.
Yes.
Thank you very much. Um, Ms. Adams, for the court reporter, would, your name is Patricia, right?
Yes.
Okay, so there you are, Mr. Bazili, Patricia Adams. Thank you. Uh, and Mr., uh, Ms. Jenkins, and then I'll let Mr. Smith speak again.
Um, I was gonna just suggest sometimes if we have an outline, like a, a table of contents at the beginning. I know we have it in the regulations when they're included. But that gives people an idea of kind of how subject matter is, is organized. And, you know, if you see fifteen pages of single spaced print, it can be pretty overwhelming. So maybe just a quick index at the front of it to help people see where we're going.
Yeah, I mean, we could add that in more detail to the front. That's a great idea because I really rely on the table of contents for everything. Because I want to get to my answer. Uh, so, uh, Patrick and Susan, you don't have to come to this. What, uh, one of the suggestions that we got yesterday from, uh, in one of the emails was that we hold a meeting just for the business owners and walk them through it. And I know it's hard for all of us to see where we make it, where we're making it sound like legalese. Um, Mary, even though she's a lawyer, actually does a great job with not sounding lawyer-like, but, um.
It's all, it, it's the planners who pretend that we're lawyers.
So we'll have to look for where that is, but hopefully people can tell us because we don't want to make it hard for folks to understand it. And, you know, reading that stuff is hard. Um, okay, Mr. Smith, if you would, go ahead.
Uh, just two things. The bug rating that Susan referred to stands for backlight, uplight and glare. And that was developed as part of the Model Outdoor Lighting Ordinance. And it varies depending on lighting zones. The other question is, you raised the question about grandfathering as far as existing lighting fixtures are concerned. In commercial applications, those commercial applications also have to comply with the state building code, which was amended in two thousand and four that required all commercial outdoor lighting to be fully shielded. So if someone put an LED light in, they put it in after two thousand and four, and that means that that's non-compliant and it has to comply. So even though it's not a Greenwich Town Regulation, it is a state regulation according to the state building code that has been in effect before any of the LED lights went into, uh, uh, it went into existence on a commercial level.
Yeah, and I think that's, that's a fine thing. It's whether or not, I, I think, Mr. Smith, that people's concern was we had a new regulation and we were going to go around forcing people to take down their lights. The fact that the building code, now you're saying the building code, the new building code, the twenty twenty-two does not change the lighting? Mr. Smith?
Um, I'm, you're echoing, my equipment is not good right now. I can, all I do is hear an echo.
Okay, so can you hear me now if I talk slowly?
I can hear you.
Okay, my question to you was whether there were any further changes in the building code regarding lighting in the building code that came out last year? Because we, the Connecticut Building Code was updated in twenty twenty-two.
As far as the outdoor lighting regulation part of it, that has stayed the same since two thousand and four with no change.
Okay, all right. So that's, yeah, and I don't think our, anybody here in town has any issue with the building code. I think they were worried about zoning, turning into whatever. Okay, thank you, Mr. Smith.
Thank you.
Um, so, uh, what, what, um, Susan, we would spare you this, but what I've gotten from the emails is that that uh, people want to have, the business owners want to have a meeting.
Mm hmm.
And just the business owners and the commercial people, and that's fine. It's a public hearing, so anybody can come, but they want it to be focused on them. And, uh, Susan, I know you've gone above and beyond for us as we always end up asking people to do. And we apologize, but, um, but Patrick, on the other hand, he's stuck. So, um, when, when sometime in September.
It's my pleasure to help everybody.
Sometime in September, we'll have, um, a hearing, a, a public workshop with all the business owners and we'll go over it. Uh, what I would sugge-, I, I don't know whether Zoom is better. Uh, sometimes the business owners would rather have Zoom because they can stay near their businesses. Uh, whereas sometimes they just want to be in person. So we'll figure that out and we'll do it. I think we better wait till September. Not that anybody minds having August off. And, uh, Susan, we will spare you because I think we just want to hear input at this point and we can always come back to it. Yes, ma'am, you were going to say something?
Well, I was gonna say what I can do before that meeting in advance of it is do the table of contents, uh, which I think might be helpful for the business owners as well as the general public.
Thank you. Thank you very much. All righty.
It's not a heavy lift, so we can do that.
Okay. Thank you very much and thank you for making the time tonight.
Thank you.
And so this item will remain, will be continued as they like us to say.
Most likely would be later in September because we would be.
Yes, sorry.
So, I, I, I was just saying, you know, the, our schedule in September, I think it's the eighth and uh, to the seventeenth or something like that, we will be, obviously, it would be later in the month and not earlier to, to consider this as a vote, voted item. But, you know, we will, we'll do the outreach and, you know, hopefully we'll, we'll get everyone's feedback so we all understand what, what the concerns are and address them.
And it's fine if we go longer. The most important thing with this is that we get community consensus and everybody's behind it if it takes us longer. So I'm thinking we'll have that workshop in September and see how that goes. Um, I, we're gonna need to include the landscapers because one of the persons who wrote, you know, didn't want to be stopped from installing landscape lighting. Okay, thank you, Susan.
Thank you all.
Um, before we end the public hearing, I just wanted to clarify something because apparently the question has come in tonight. When an item is not on an, on an agenda, we cannot discuss it. So an application that has been submitted to us before and about which people want to comment, they have to, they can email us and it'll go in the record and be distributed to the commission, but we can't discuss it unless the proponents and the opponents are all at the hearing with us. So that's why I know there's an application that's caused some consternation, but we can't hear it if it's not on the agenda. And so, Mr. Bazili, you can go home now.
Yes, I will. Thank you very much.
So ended the public hearing. All right. So we've got a few decisions to make and I'm going to start out with the first one. And y'all have to pay really close attention. Not really. We cannot vote on the minutes of August five because we do not have enough people who were present at that meeting to vote. However, for the minutes of September eight twenty and October thirteen of twenty twenty-two, we have Albin, Levy, Barilak and Wells here and present. And they all attended those meetings. So those four people will vote on these minutes. Albin, Levy, Barilak and Wells. Mary, I know you were at the meetings, but you weren't on the commission and I think legally it's better if you were. I hereby move approval of the minutes of September eighth, September twentieth and October thirteenth, twenty twenty-two. Do I have a second?
I can.
Thank you, Mr. Levy. Mr. Levy, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Barilak, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Wells, how do you vote?
Aye.
Albin is also an aye and with that, the motion passes four, nothing. The August five meetings o- o- only have three of us and I believe that is not sufficient. Is that correct?
Uh, we need, uh, the commission needs four. Great.
There you go. So we have to revote August five. We will have to push it to the next agenda because, um, believe it or not, Mr. Wells was absent that day.
That was the day, huh?
Yeah.
Sorry.
All right.
That wasn't, that was some, some accounting mistake or something, some headcount mistake. He was there.
All righty, now, we have three decision items. We have River Road. We have Berkeley Insurance.
And one hundred Brookside.
And, and one, and one hundred Brookside. Thank you. Um, who would like to make a motion on eighty-nine? Okay, which one do you want to start with? You want to start with Berkeley?
Yes.
Yeah, we can. I, I'm ready on that.
Oops.
You go. No, I was saying you go. That was like, uh, okay.
Yeah.
So, Mr. Wells, would you kindly make the motion?
I will make a motion and hopefully you're patient because it's kind of long.
Uh, hey, Nick's not listening. His are really long.
Oh, yeah. Well, that's what I started with. Anyway, four seventy-five Steamboat Road, Final Coastal Site Plan Special Permit PLPZ two oh two three oh, oh, two, three, four. The applicant is seeking approval for a permit to construct a new guardhouse, renovate the existing office building, replace HVAC mechanical equipment, install an acoustic barrier for the rooftop mechanical area, new lighting in the below building parking area and add associated landscaping. In addition, install an enclosed generator and diesel fuel storage area on a two point nine one three acre parcel located in the GB and coastal over, overlay zones per sections six dash one eleven of the BCR in sections twenty-two A dash ninety to twenty-two A dash ninety-six of the Connecticut General, General Statutes. Whereas the applicant will commence construction on penthouse level improvements approved by the commission on five twenty-five, twenty-one under application PLPZ two oh two one, oh, oh, one, seven, six. Whereas the site is non-conforming as to parking per section one fifty-eight B of the BCR. Whereas EMAC has recommended the applicants consider substitut- substituting a natural gas generator for the proposed diesel emergency generator. Uh, whereas, uh, Myers and Engineers provided a memorandum dated seven twenty-seven, twenty-three stating the following concerns about installing a natural gas generator. During a severe storm event, natural gas supplies might be curtailed. Second, the generator, the diesel generator meets Connecticut Building Stone can, Building Code standards. Third, a natural gas generator would exceed the height limitations imposed by installing the generator on the ground floor of four seventy-five Steamboat Road. Lastly, natural gas generators take longer to source than a diesel generator. Separately, the memorandum indicated that outside a major outage, the generator would operate only for thirty minutes per month for maintenance purposes. The commission expressed concerns about the pollution the diesel generation would emit and asked the applicant to provide information on what EPA diesel exhaust emission level, levels one through four, the proposed generator would meet. The commission understood that the strictest standards for diesel emissions is EPA. The commission understood that the strictest standards for diesel emissions is EPA Tier 4 final. Whereas, whoops, let's see. Whereas, the applicant indicated that having a Tier 4 final diesel generator would be of such a height above a Tier 2 generator, which is what they were proposing, that it would jeopardize the integrity of 475 Steamboat. The applicant added that to address the noise issues raised by its neighbors, it was critical to place the generator, generator within and not outside of the building. The current generator is outside 475 Steamboat. The commission finds that section 158B of the BCR modifies required parking requirements for the site. The, as required, the property came before the commission as a pre-app at the 11/22/22 public hearing under file number PLPC 2022 0505. On 12/14/22, the applicant received a variance of floor area by the ZBA under application PLZ 2022 077. Zoning issued comments on 7/11/23 indicating the proposal meets the requirements of the BZR and endorse a project for zoning permit sign-off. Health issued comments on 7/12/23 requiring review of sound levels that are projected from the new equipment. Sewer issued comments 7/12/23 requesting the applicant submit a signed letter acknowledging receipt of their P&amp;Z comments. Engineering issued comments on 2/16/23 indicating engineering concerns can be addressed prior to zoning permit sign-off. EMAC issued comments on 6/23/23 indicating recommendations for the project, including the substitution of a natural gas generator for the proposed diesel one. Conservation issued comments dated 7/11/23 indicating recommendations to the project. IWWCA issued permit number 202309 on 3/21/23 indicating no permit required. ARC issued minutes dated 5/17/23 indicating approved, approved as submitted. Therefore, motion to approve the site plan special permit noting the following. Intermittent use of the Davenport Avenue Gate granted under application PLPC 21800489 and PLPC 20190010 is hereby rescinded. Per ARC comment, the applicant agreed to submit a three dimensional rending from the perspective of the east side in response to an abutter's comments at the meeting. Per sewer division comment, the application, the applicant has submitted an acknowledgement letter dated 7/13/23. Finally, the applicant shall address any and all remaining staff and interdepartmental issues and I welcome any comments, corrections.
That's as long as.
No, when I did, when we did the hospital, it was like six pages long, I went on and on and on and you guys were all yawning.
I was going to commend Aron for, for.
Great job, Mr. Wells. Question, is that what the applicant said about Davenport that they're willing to give it up? Did they say that? Shaking head? Tracy, shaking head?
No, madam chair, they specifically do not want to give that up.
Okay, so let's delete that if everybody's okay with that. So we are deleting the Davenport thing. I actually forgot.
They are providing the logs now too, so we have.
Okay, yeah, I, I forgot to check on that. But I kind of didn't remember which way they had gone that night. Don't tell Tom Hegney I said that. All right, do I have a second? Mr. Levy has seconded. Ms. Jenkins, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Barilak?
Aye.
And Mr. Wells?
Aye.
Levy?
Aye.
Albin is also aye and with that, the motion passes five, nothing. Should we do 89 River or 100 Brookside next?
Let's do 89 River because I can.
Yeah, because I'm going to be really embarrassed because I got this teeny weeny little one, I'm going to do the last one and I'm like, oh, you guys are going to think I'm a, I'm an amateur. Go.
Okay, River Road Development LLC, application PLPZ 2023 00270. For a final coastal site plan and special permit to construct two 103 foot by 17 foot carport ports. It's not what it says in the, in the, should I make it 16 feet 11 inches, which is what it says in the notice. 16 feet 11 inch carports, each having capacity of 10 cars and associated restriping of the parking lot to accommodate the carport structural supports, resulting in a reduction of onsite parking from 78 to 76 standard spaces. Three existing ADA compliant spaces will remain as is on a site exceeding 40,000 cubic feet of building volume located on the property of 89 River Road in the WB Coastal Overlay and Flood Hazard Overlay Zones. Whereas, the existing parking was associated with a final coastal site plan and special permits under applications PLPZ 2016 0038 and 39 and PLPZ 2019 0075 and 76. The applicant submitted a pre-application to the commission on 12/6/22 for its review. The only zoning change proposed is the loss of two parking spaces on the site. The commission finds that, this is where we find out if I can read my own handwriting.
Always tricky, always tricky.
Oh. Okay, the answer is I can't easily. Zoning comments from the ZEO dated 7/26/23 indicate the project meets applicable zoning, building zone regulations. ARC reviewed the project at their 6/7/23 meeting and accepted the proposal as submitted with discretion granted to the architect on height of end wall and style of rafter rails. Wetland staff endorsed a permit questionnaire on 6/9/23 indicating no presence of inland wetlands, title only, and therefore no permit required for the proposal. Conservation gave comments dated 7/26/23 recommending that the planted areas behind the carports not be blocked from sunlight. DEEP comments dated 7/10/23 indicated the project is consistent with the Connecticut Coastal Management Act. EMAC is exempt, the, the project is exempt from the energy narrative pursuant to section 614A 22D. This is where I cease to read my own handwriting. Therefore, the motion to approve the final, I'm sorry, I'm going to go back to the issues comments. The loss of two parking spaces will not create a deficiency since 75 are required and 76, that three ADA compliant will remain after modification. The roof overhang. I'm sorry, this is where I really can't read my handwriting.
So the roof overhang, I've got a note on that, the roof overhang will be, it will be limited to two feet to comply with Resilience 6-128.
Okay, as to the projections rear yards.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Therefore, motion to approve the final coastal site plan and special permit noting the following. The applicant will obtain any necessary sign-off from the sewer department prior to zoning permit sign-off. That an exemption certificate shall be obtained from DPW prior to zoning permit sign-off. Finally, the applicant shall address any and all remaining staff or interdepartmental issues.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Levy?
Yes.
Mr. Levy has seconded. Mr. Levy, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Wells?
Aye.
Mr. Barilak?
Aye.
Ms. Jenkins?
Aye.
Albin is also aye and with that, the motion passes five, nothing, and I am going to look like an amateur to you guys, I hereby.
Not that very much.
Yeah.
I do not second that motion.
I hereby move approval of the application to re, by Jonathan Ackow and Sanghar Horton to rezone a property located 100 Brookside from the RA1 Zone to the R12 Zone as will be shown on the zoning map on file in the town clerk's office. In so doing, the commission notes that this property has a total square footage of 22,798 feet, thus making it significantly nonconforming for the zone. We further note that the abutting properties, that four of the six abutting properties are in the R12 Zone to which this, which this, this lot will now become. And that the ZEO has signed off for zoning compliance as of July 25. Finally, this rezoning will eliminate an existing nonconformities for cover, coverage and for lot shape, but more importantly for the FAR, which stands at point 189 in a zone which allows point 135 and will now be able to go to point 315. The commission, in approving this rezoning, notes that it is consistent with the plan of conservation and development in that it protects the existing structures and the existing development pattern in the neighborhood and supports the community character. Any other outstanding staff or departmental comments shall be addressed. You know what, add one more thing. The applicant does recognize that this property is, that part of this property is in the AE flood zone and contains a part of a floodway and is aware that future development should address these considerations accordingly. And with that, do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Wells has seconded. Mr. Jenkins, Ms. Jenkins, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Barilak?
Aye.
Mr. Wells?
Aye.
Mr. Levy, feel free to vote your conscience.
Aye.
Okay, but you can vote, no, it's fine. All right, Albin is also aye. We were going to be okay and I know you had a lot of misgivings and I think people should always put their misgivings on the record. You're still an aye though, right? All right, okay. All right, with that, the motion passes five, nothing, and we are done for the night, it's 7:46 PM.
One question for a newbie, do we send our resolution?
It would be good.
To the staff so they can use it for the decision letter?
Send it to your staff.
Oh, you're saying no?
No, she said to her.
Yeah, no, that's, that's a bring it on.
Bring it on. I normally send it, especially if I do a really long one. They listen to the tape, to the recording and make sure that what you read is what you wrote because sometimes like what you read, we amended it and maybe, but they listen to the whole thing. But it's really helpful and saves them time because everybody hates doing decision letters. You also now have an obligation to read the decision letter that comes out.
Right.
Today, we didn't have Nick, we all had to read those decision letters today and answer on them. Patrick, I got an answer back, people would like to have the business owner group in Zoom.
Okay.
That's easier for people.
We'll just, we'll just set up, we'll find a time, I mean.
Um, yeah, I asked.
I, I need, I need somebody to be the chair of the, the, the association there to let me know what the availability should be, but, you know.
Okay, so they're suggesting 4:00 PM? And, and, and saying the, maybe get owners and our folks to like the sign committee, which was there, and just get everybody talking about it. So it should be an interesting meeting.
Sure.
Yeah. Yeah. Okay, anything else from anybody? So enjoy the next six days off. There will not be a briefing next week, even though we added something to the agenda and Patrick threatened me if I added anything else.
I did, I never did, never threatened anyone.
He was like, no, no.
I will say that there may be, there may be other staff members who are threatening me if I, if you.
No.
Letting you run rampant, but that's all right.
It was just that I just, I was torn because I didn't want to make Mr. Hegney wait a month. And on the other hand, we are trying to discourage people from coming in at 3 o'clock in the afternoon with all the answers, that doesn't work for us.
And it was the only application that had that opportunity, so, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, it was just, I, I just felt like we had to hold the line that we are not taking stuff. Oh, it came in at 4:07, now we can make a decision, ex nay. So.
We're meeting at 1:00.
Yeah.
Tracy's gonna have to break the news to Jackie that she's got a staff report, but that's all right.
No, Jackie does not do a staff report, she's just going to send the material. We will remember for a week what we said. We might not remember for two weeks, but we can remember for a week what needed to be done. She does not need to do a staff report, we're big people, right, guys? All right, okay, everybody have a great week.
Bye.
Night, everybody.
Bye.